1:00 PM, all council members are present. Would you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Our first item of business is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak on items not on the agenda. This comment period's limited to the first 30 minutes of the meeting, and if we have any overrun, we'll pick it up at the end of the meeting. Right now, I have five comments on here. I see a couple of names that I think are probably for comments on the bid. Mr. Schnell, Mr. Owens, are these for the bid? Okay, so we'll get you up during that time. Ms. Vosberg?
Yes.
For items not on the agenda? Great, come on up, ma'am. And so Ms. Vosberg, if you will state your name and address for the record, and then I will start, you'll see the three-minute timer above me, and we'll give you three minutes.
Very good. Thank you, Town Council. My name is Teri Vosberg. I live at 12224 South Seasong Court in Parker, and I'm here today to talk about the Parker Residential Parking Program. And two points I wanted to bring up on this program is, one, talk about the status of the program, its effectiveness, and a little bit about some suggested improvements. So first of all, overall, I think the parking program is hugely successful. And the way I measure success is, in 2018, I used to walk out my front door on a school day, and at 9:00 AM, there were over 60 student cars parked there, and we had to deal with all the student high school parking problems. Today, I walked outside at 9:00 AM on a school day, and there's no student parkers there. So again, just very, very effective, and I want to thank everybody involved for supporting the program and letting us have it. Now, it has been about four and a half years since we implemented the program. Some things are working really well. A few things could be fine-tuned a little bit, so I wanted to offer up two suggestions there. One is, when we come in as residents and we renew our permits...
Teri.
Oh, thank you. And when we renew our permits, we are, and I'm asking that we look at that process and that program. Sometimes we're given a little reminder on what the rules and the regulations are as residents. Sometimes we're not given anything to remind us what's going on. And then on the permit parking, we're supposed to come in and renew our stickers. It's gone really well for the initial period and the renewal, but last time I went and renewed, we're not ready for the updated stickers, and this is very important for the enforcement, for the officers, and for us to know when things expire. So on the renewal process, we just need to work on the communication to the residents and updating the stickers to make sure that we stay compliant. That was one request. And then my request to the board is, can you help us put together a team to go through this renewal on the process? And could we ask for a cross-functional team on this? Of course, we'll have the parking manager that runs the program. Could we have a resident be there to also make sure the residents can be compliant, so we'll have a voice of the customer? And third, could we have the right, I don't know if it's engineering or legal, make sure when we do any process updates and communications that we're staying within the boundaries of the ordinance? That was request number one. Request number two is, again, the program is hugely successful. The students are being very compliant. The way that the parking permit program works is, it is effective Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and the students have learned, thanks to a lot of education, to respect that permit period. However, now we're getting that 2:30, 3 o'clock zone where we're getting a lot of traffic from the high school coming back in. They're parking right above the no-parking signs, and they're waiting to pick up students. So our request is, could we get some help getting an educator out there maybe the first week of school and reminding the people who are not reading the signs that they really are legitimate signs, and please practice or execute what the ordinance demands? And then after about a week, usually everybody gets it. Maybe this educator could stop by once a week randomly during the school days thereafter, again, during that 2:30, 3 o'clock period, and make sure everybody's compliant.
Thank you, Ms. Vosberg. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Melissa Fogel. And Ms. Fogel, if you will state your name and address for the record as well, and I'll start your three minutes.
Sure. Hello, Town Council. My name is Melissa Fogel. I live at 22316 East Idlewild Drive, and I would like to say that, first of all, it's super important to retain Town Council support for this program, mainly for safety. Instead of having students racing through the neighborhood, and believe me, it happens every day, every morning, trying to park, running across the gulch, whatever, through their parking lot, and little kids that were out, it's just very unsafe, okay? Next, annually, we need to ensure that key participants are educated about this program. The students get their information from the principal. So the principal is telling them, you can't park in Idlewild, you're not allowed to park there. The residents are finding out the information from the HOA and their board directors, but the police, some policemen are aware of the program, and some policemen are not aware of the program. I called a couple, like, after school started, and there was a car parked illegally, and no one had heard of the program, of the resident permit parking only, and so I had to explain it. They sent someone out. Anyway, it was fine. All right. Anyway, I just want to ensure that we do continue to have your support for the program, and that's all I really need to say.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up on my list is Mr. Adams. You know the drill.
I know the drill.
All right.
Christopher Adams, 12581 Prince Creek Drive. I was driving around town last week and saw that we have two more car service centers coming up, and I'm kind of tired seeing all of them, so I did a very scientific Google search, and we have about 22 gas stations in town, 45 tire service or repair shops in town, and 15 car washes. Again, there's an overlap between gas stations, car washes, or whatnot, but we need to, as a town, I think, push to develop our commercial sector outside of car service industries. And I know we have a lot of vacant land that's commercial zoned, and those are the people with the pockets that then build, but we need to figure out some sort of incentive to bring, whether it's an office building, or medical, or something else into town. Just, I feel like we're inundated with anything to do with vehicles, and I think everyone that drives through and sees a new one popping up feels the same way. So just something for us to put on the radar to try to figure out how to get other commercial industries into town. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Adams. All right, any other public comment? If you didn't sign up, now's the time. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item, reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. I'll start to my far-right council member, Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Wednesday, I had, sorry, last Thursday, partnership, I'm sorry, not partnership, geez, it started with me. What did I have? I had Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority, excuse me. Very productive meeting, did some great things. And on that, we, the Town of Parker and the Pace Center, will be hosting the Cherry Creek Watershed Conference, annual conference, this Thursday, the 24th. So any council members are obviously welcome to stop by and say hello, but we'll have some visiting lakes talking to us, and we'll talk about our watershed and all things scientific and total dissolved nitrogen and total dissolved phosphorus and just fascinating things. So feel free to stop on by and save me.
Coffee will be provided. Councilmember Barrington.
Thank you. So I attended two older adult initiative forums at Secor and the library. I played in a golf tournament with councilmember Rivera and Dyak, and we won, by the way. Attended a water conservation meeting with councilmembers Hefta and, why can't I remember? It's in the water. And Wilks. And I attended a Minutemen ribbon cutting. I drove for the Parker Task Force, their food drive on Saturday, and joined all my fellow councilmembers for a very brief appearance at the farmer's market for our pop-in. Oh, my gosh, it's going to be one of those meetings. That will be all.
And we need some coffee for councilmember Barrington, too. Councilmember Hendricks.
I don't want to screw up, so I have nothing to report.
Oh. Councilmember Dyak.
No Brew Fest, Todd? No.
Go ahead.
Well, it's your thing.
Everybody hashtag Todd Hendricks in here, so...
I attended the Parker Brew Fest for Cherry Creek Valley Rotary Club of Parker, our annual fundraiser. Big success, and that's it.
All right. Attended a golf tournament. It was a fundraiser. That's the only way we won. We had a 33 on 18 holes, and for you golfers out there, you know that's statistically impossible unless you buy a lot of string and buy a lot of throw cards. And we did all the above. It's all about truth. You've got to be fair. Got to be fair. But again, great cause. It raises money for high school scholarships, for challenged students who want to go to college. So I think they gave away eight scholarships. They've given out over a quarter million dollars over the lifetime, and again, just a great organization we have there at the Debbie Jackson-Darryl Pride and More Memorial Golf Tournament. On the 10th, I had a E-470 board meeting, a very light agenda. We had a financial review. Traffic is up a little bit. Spending is down, but spending will increase because we have capital projects along the corridor from I-70 to 105th, 4th. So that's ramping up, and that is all.
Councilmember Wilks.
I checked a Red Bull an hour ago, so I should be good. So I didn't get to play in the golf tournament, but I did volunteer for it, so that was wonderful, like John said, to be a part of that. And then on the 15th, I attended the Well Groomed Pets Ribbon Cutting here in Parker, and I signed my Rocky Boy up to go get groomed there, so I'm excited about that and that new business that we have here. And then today, the mayor and I and chief went to American Academy Motsenbacher to welcome back the students for their first day of school, and that was fantastic, to fist bump hundreds of kids and see some very happy and some not so much about school starting again, but it was just wonderful to attend.
Councilmember Hefta.
Yeah, it was a busy couple of weeks. Again, I attended a water conservation meeting with councilmember Wilks and Barrington. Enjoyed the farmer's market with all of Town Council minus the mayor yesterday. Where were you, mayor?
It's going to be that kind of meeting, guys. It's going to be that kind of meeting.
But we did miss you. Went to a meeting with the Parker Chamber of Commerce on a few items, and also attended the Douglas County Homeless Initiative meeting, and also joined councilmember Barrington at the Older Adult Initiative Forum at the Parker Library, which was a great forum, by the way. I know everybody in this audience is relatively young, but if you are over 55, it is a super, super listening tour right now that the Douglas County Commissioners are putting on. Lots of opportunity to gain useful information as you cross that threshold in your 50s. Thanks.
Thank you. And just so y'all know, I was busy in these two weeks, just because I missed the farmer's market. But I attended the Douglas County Economic Development Collaborative Meeting, so we're looking to launch a new branding campaign for Douglas County to bring good, high-paying jobs into not only Castle Rock, but to every community within Douglas County. I also attended, last Thursday, the Rotary Club of Parker's 30th anniversary. They've been around 30 years as of last Friday, and if you drove by Town Hall last Friday, the flag was flown in their honor and delivered to them for 30 years of amazing service. If you see the gazebo in O'Brien Park, that's all on behalf of them, so it's an amazing organization. Attended Sky Ridge's 20th anniversary. Attended the Parker Cruisers Car Show benefiting the Parker Task Force. They raised almost $6,000 for the Parker Task Force, which is pretty amazing, and attended with councilmember Wilks this morning, American Academy, and the enthusiasm of those kids, my knuckles are sore this evening, so it was a good, good time. All right, with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote. There'll be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So councilmembers, you have items 4A through 4F for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 4A through F, please.
Second.
Motion is made by Rivera, second by Hefta. Rivera?
All right.
Barrington? Yes. Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Hi.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. First up in our public hearings, and we have several of them tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing at 7:16. It's a public hearing on Horseshoe Ridge, Lot 2, Block 1, for a new vet clinic, and it's a use by special review. And we have Ashley presenting for staff, and then you have an applicant as well.
Yes.
And does your applicant have a presentation?
Uh, no.
Just for questions?
Just questions, yes.
Okay. I think he's sitting behind you and saying, no, I don't have that. All right. So go ahead. We did open this at 7:16, and Ashley, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, council, is this? Okay, just making sure this thing's on. Good evening, Town Council. I will be, this evening, I will be presenting the Horseshoe Ridge Use by Special Review request for a veterinary clinic. This property is located at the northwest intersections of Party Street and Hess Road. This property is bounded on the north by Commercial Services, the west by Medium Density Residential, and to the south and east by undeveloped land. The property is zoned as mixed use and is located within the Horseshoe Ridge Plan Development area. The property is located within the Medium Density Residential Character area in the master plan and is considered a part of a neighborhood center for that area. Even though Commercial Services are allowed in this location, the occurring zoning does not allow for the proposed use of veterinarian clinic as a use by right. The 0.95 acre property was annexed into the town in 2004 within the Horseshoe Ridge PD and platted in 2008. Currently, this parcel is under construction, and the proposed veterinary clinic would be located within the approved multi-tenant structure. The proposed vet clinic will be approximately 2,751 square feet, consisting of one surgery table and two dental cleaning stations. This vet clinic serves small domesticated pets such as cats, dogs, and will not keep patients overnight. The clinic will mitigate potential noise issues by providing sound dampening insulation between the clinic and their neighbor, as well as only take animals to the waste station by themselves to prevent noisy interactions. The clinic will also mitigate potential smell issues by maintaining a clear and sanitary pet waste, excuse me, pet waste area, as well as provide animal waste trash stations for animals within their owner's care. Pet waste will be picked up immediately by staff and disposed of in the proper waste receptacles. These pet waste, these pet waste stations will be emptied at least twice daily, including once at closing. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a rezoning proposal. After reviewing the applicant's responses to the criteria, it is staff's view that the proposed use will not detrimentally impact the surrounding uses and will be consistent with the town's master plan. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that, one, the project is consistent with the master plan; two, all nine approval considerations and the land development ordinance have been satisfied; and, three, all public notice requirements have been satisfied. Therefore, staff recommends that the Town Council approves the Horseshoe Ridge Use by Special Review for a veterinarian clinic. And this concludes staff's presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions, any question that the council may have. The applicant is also here to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Ashley. I'm going to start to my immediate left, councilmember Dyak. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation, Ashley. No questions.
Okay. Councilmember Wilks?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
On criteria seven, will not cause significant air, water, and noise pollution, could you expand a little bit on your analysis on that?
Um, yes. With discussion with the applicant, they have agreed to ensure that especially noise and smell are one of the biggest, are some of the biggest issues that they will help to mitigate, especially being noise with the sound dampening insulation between the multi-unit units, and then also taking animals out independently so that they don't cause noisy interactions with other animals.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yeah, thank you. Just one question in regards to criteria number seven. Also, in the pet waste area, and I'm not sure if this is for yourself or for the future owners, the pet waste area, the relief area, if you will, is that a porous or a non-porous surface? And if non-porous, where does the rinse water drain into?
Um, I think the last, the last time I checked the site plan, it was turf, or was...
Turf.
Was, not turf, but surface.
Surface.
Yeah.
So porous. So there is absorption and natural filtering going on.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, Mr. Scarry, would you like to come up? And I know you don't have a presentation, but if you would state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Michael Scarry. I'm the applicant, and I live at 11132 East Maplewood Place in Angledwood, Colorado.
Excellent, excellent. Any comments before we begin the questioning interview?
Well, I just thank you for reviewing this, really. I'm excited about this.
We're not that scared, are we? All right. We'll go in the same order. Councilmember Dyak, questions for the applicant?
Yeah, what caused you to choose Parker?
Yeah, my brother actually lives in that cul-de-sac you saw in that photo there, in Horseshoe Ridge. So I've visited him over the past couple of years. I've always had my eye on this building, just didn't think it was available, and then when it became available, jumped on it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yeah, on criteria number eight, the area will be adequately landscaped, buffered, and screened. So that entire area is going to be a parking lot beside the building, or can you tell us a little bit about that area, where your building's at?
Yeah, so two of the sides, the, oh, that'd be west and north side, that's going to be parking lot, and then on the other sides, I believe that there's all going to be landscaping there.
Um, yeah, I might be able to answer that a little better. Um, yeah, so the north and west side are parking, but there are, but this application will meet all of the towns' requirements as far as landscaping and screening, especially the pet waste, the waste station. This applicant, this application has already been, the site plan process has already begun, and we will make sure that they meet all of our requirements.
About how many parking spaces do you anticipate?
Yeah, I, looking at that, we would expect about 20 for us.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No question, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you. Just, if you could, just talk to me a little bit about the relief area and...
Yeah, the relief area should not be used very often at all.
Okay.
So any animal that's coming in is going to wait in their car, immediately ushered in the building, so they won't spend very much time outside at all. We have enough exam rooms, we have six, that there shouldn't be very much waiting at all. Most of our patients are in and out. I mean, half an hour appointments, vaccines, the simple stuff, where there shouldn't be much of that. The only reason we really should use that would be any surgery patients. Again, my goal is to get them in and home. I don't like them waiting around if they don't have to be, and then with that, they'll be sedated as well. So there's going to, not all the way sedated, but enough tranquilizer, they shouldn't be, you know, barking and crazy and stuff like that. So it really should be pretty minimal that we use that. I would estimate maybe one to two pets a day for our use, and that's going to be supervised, double-leashed. Again, they would likely be on sedation, and then we would clean it up right away.
So that leads to my second question, because you mentioned it also. What is double-leashed? Is that one leash in each hand?
Yep, so that's the leash they come on, and then we use a slip lead just because we don't trust all the leashes and collars. They like to slip off a lot. So the slip lead is one that is secured around the neck, so there's two points, so if one fails, there's another one.
Okay. Absolutely. Thank you.
That's just so no one gets away.
Yes.
All right. Thanks, sir. We may bring you back after public comment to see if there's anything you want to address.
I appreciate it, guys.
Great. All right, with that, I'm going to open up public comment at 7:25. Anyone wishing to make public comment on the Horseshoe Ridge Lot 2, Block 1 Vet Clinic? Oh, come on down, Chris. Name and address for the record.
12581 Prince Creek Drive, Christopher Adams. My biggest concern with this is Section 9 will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the president or future inhabitants. What are we doing for the storage of drugs and to make that a possible center for crime? Because vet clinics do hold drugs like pharmacies. Are they being held in a separate area under lock and key that will not enable or entice criminals to come to that area? Because it's right next to a neighborhood, and then my neighborhood and anthology is across Hess from their building with a high school that's going to go there eventually according to a major town plan. That's the biggest one. I had a couple of issues, but everyone answered the rest of them. So that's just the biggest concern. What are we doing with making sure everything inside there is safe and secure outside of the animals? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment on this on 7:26. Mr. Scarry, would you like to address the concern of storage of...
Yeah, the vast majority of our drugs we're going to have there is just going to be non-controlled drugs, antibiotics. There will be some controlled drugs, and it's under a double lock and key, so there will be two separate safes that require two separate keys to get into, plus it's security monitored, and we'll have a full alarm system there. So we're taking every precaution in the world as the DEA requires us to, to help keep it all safe.
Council, any other comment or questions, questions on this?
No further questions.
Any other questions? Okay, great. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:27, and remand it back to council. I'll start in the same order. Councilmember Dyak, any follow-up comments?
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, just judging by our visit to the farmer's market, there's a significant number of pets in Parker, and as Parker grows, the pet population grows too, and I'm sure they're going to need quality services like this.
Councilmember Wilks?
I love that there's a vet clinic going in, and, you know, to previous comment, not another gas station or automobile place, so, and I obviously love my fur baby, so I'm excited to have another vet in the town.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yeah, the location of this is sort of tucked right inside a subdivision, and so, again, if you had another type of business there, like a major fast-food chain or something like that, that would be creating a lot of traffic, and in this particular case, the property is commercially zoned for this, and you're having 20 parking spots, it's going to be a little bit lower key for the residents of that community. And so I've looked at the criteria, the nine criteria on this, and I did not find any issue with that.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I agree with councilmember Hefta about the nine criteria, and also welcome small businesses coming to Parker. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
I also agree that it takes into consideration all nine criteria, and they've been met, so we're happy to have you.
Great. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you. Appreciate, one, first and foremost, your very in-depth answers to the planning commission report and the nine criteria. I'm not sure if that was yourself, or if that was your representation, your owner's rep, but outstanding, well-answered, and very... owner's rep, but, um, outstanding, um, well answered and, and, and very, very thorough. Um, I too weigh the nine criteria. We all weigh the nine criteria. Some, you know, maybe aren't so applicable to our opinion, i.e., you know, town master plan, or, or, you know, um, traffic, that's answered by traffic, you know, studies and whatnot, but, you know, a few we do have to raise concerns on, and the ones that I, that I've had questions about, you answered thoroughly, um, not just tonight on the record, but also in your, your, um, well-stated planning commission report. So thank you very much. Welcome to Parker. I know a couple of realtors, so when you're ready to move the house, you, you let us know.
Everyone's a comedian tonight. All right, counsel, I will entertain a motion on Horseshoe Ridge Lot Two, Block One Vet Clinic used by special review.
I'm trying to get there.
It's a long, it's a long one.
I got it. Um, I move to approve based upon staff findings with the conditions contained in the staff report.
Second.
Gotta be faster than me.
Wow.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. If I can just clarify that those are the seven conditions that are contained in the staff report, so thank you.
Yes, the seven conditions contained in the staff report.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. Motion was made by Rivera, second by Barrington. Rivera?
Aight.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Welcome to Parker. But now tell your brother that we have a rule here, we don't tell people outside of Parker about Parker. So, you know, so we don't want to grow, so, but welcome to Parker. All right, next up in our public hearing is the Hess, and I will open that at 7:31 PM, is the Hess Ranch Metropolitan District, numbers five through eight, and I'll go ahead and read the resolutions into the record. Resolution number 23-064, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to Service Plan for Hess Ranch Metropolitan District Number Five. Resolution number 23-00, I'm sorry, 065, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to Service Plan for Hess Ranch Metropolitan District Number Six. Resolution number 23-066, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to Service Plan for Hess Ranch Metropolitan District Number Seven, and resolution number 23-067, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to Service Plan for Hess Ranch Metropolitan District Number Eight. Madam Town Attorney.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I'm here tonight to present, uh, the foregoing four resolutions concerning the Hess Ranch Metropolitan Districts, numbers five through eight. These districts are located between Stroh and Hess, west of North Crowfoot Valley Road. Uh, did have a vicinity map. No? Sorry? Okay. Uh, there, there'll be one in this presentation that's coming up from the applicant, I believe. Uh, they operate under an amended and restated service plan approved in 2019. They are seeking a First Amendment to their service plans to authorize the districts to create special improvement districts to inspo- to impose special assessments against property within the districts in order to finance costs of public improvements. It is important to note that these will be assessments and not property taxes or development fees. The debt issued by the special improvement districts will not be debt, not be considered debt under the service plan and does not count against the metro district's, um, debt limit. Uh, the special assessments will all be due payable at certificate of occupancy, therefore they will be paid by the developer builder before they are sold to third-party residents. State law authorizes the formation of special improvement districts by a special district if it's authorized in their service plan. They are not separate political subdivisions and are governed by the governing body of the district. The applicants have a more detailed presentation tonight on special improvement districts and their application for First Amendment, so I will turn it over to them if there's no questions from counsel for me at this time.
Great. So we're going to start with staff questions before you all come down, so hang on just a second. Uh, we'll start with Councilmember Rivera on questions for staff.
No questions for staff.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
All right. Come on down. And if you will, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, uh, Shelby Noble, 46 South Albion, Denver, Colorado.
Great. Welcome.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Um, as I mentioned, I'm Shelby Noble. I'm with Piper Sandler, and we are specialists in metro districts and special improvement districts throughout the state of Colorado. Um, is there a booker, or over here? Okay. Right.
If it gets out of control, we can have the clerk's office do that.
Perfect. So as mentioned, uh, tonight we are here to discuss a proposed service plan amendment. Um, this is for Hess Ranch Districts number five through eight. Um, the amended and restated service plan for districts four through eight were approved August 5th, 2019, and those were consistent with the town's model service plan. This is a limited, um, service plan amendment that is authorizing districts five through eight to establish special improvement districts within the boundaries, impose assessments, and issue bonds payable from those assessments to finance public improvements. As mentioned, this is allowable through the Special District Act. Um, the town's model service plan is tech, is actually silent on this, so which is why we are coming back to counsel to present. Um, as mentioned, assessments will be paid at or prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, so nothing is passed on to the homeowners. Um, Hess Ranch, uh, we are here tonight on behalf of Dreamfinders Homes, um, who is anticipating to build approximately 1,800 homes within Hess Ranch with price points ranging from $600,000 to $900,000. We are working with them to establish ways of funding additional public improvements, um, where finished lot values are upwards of $225,000 for infrastructure. Um, back, we have issued bonds at Hess Ranch. Uh, we did so in 2020 and 2022. Approximately $100 million of bonds have been issued to fund public improvements. The current service plan has a maximum debt limit of $254 million, so there is additional, uh, capacity of $151 million within the current service plan, but that is for bonds that are issued backed by ad valorem property tax. Just a little bit on special improvement districts here. As mentioned, um, special improvement districts are, uh, not a separate government. Um, they are governed by the Metro District Board, which is why we are here tonight. Um, the Metro District can issue these special assessment, um, bonds through, um, special assessments that are imposed on the special improvement district. Um, this is different than the limited tax general obligation bonds that you generally see financed by metropolitan districts. Um, as men, uh, the key point here is that the Metro District, um, bonds are paid by future property taxes, and these are revenue bonds that are repaid prior to a homeowner moving into the property. Um, some advantages of the special improvement district. Uh, these are used when we need early-stage financing. So as mentioned, there are very, um, heavy infrastructure costs within the development of Hess Ranch or Looking Glass, as you may more formally, or more commonly know it. Um, these do come with a lower cost of borrowing, so a special improvement district can issue tax-exempt debt as opposed to financing that the developer would be allowed to use, which is typically coming from a bank or some other type of, you know, private equity, which comes at a much higher cost. And these come with longer-term financing, so typically 20 years is around the term of the special improvement district bonds that would be issued. These are complementary to the limited tax bonds that have already been issued and will continue funding public infrastructure. Um, I'll mention it again, these are just funded by special assessments, um, not ad valorem property taxes and not passed on to the homeowner. Uh, currently, we are anticipating that the special improvement districts would be solely within District Number Five and the inclusion parcel, but this would allow District Seven and Eight to also, um, form SIDs in the future. District Four is not a part of this. Um, finished lot values are around 33% of our total sales price, so that is what we are looking at when we're financing these. The cost of, uh, that financing rate is around 8%, so that compares to traditional financing of close to 15% in today's marketplace. Our request tonight is to approve the service plan amendments for Hess Ranch Metropolitan Districts, numbers five through eight. That's our full presentation, so, uh, I'm here, the developers here, uh, district council, and, uh, board members, so-
Great.
For any questions?
Thank you. We'll, uh, we'll turn to council questions, and counsel, you can ask questions on any of the four resolutions as we go through, but they will require each their own motion. So, Councilmember Rivera, we'll start with you.
Uh, thank you. Just, just for clarity for myself and for the public in the room, so you're, we're going to do a special assessment that is payable upon closing to the property. And do we have a, a certain amount that that's going to be for each lot, or an estimate of certain amount that that's going to add on to the price? You said not payable by the residents, but it is in the, in the front end payable by the residents, and, and that's why maybe counsel in the past has, has leaned more towards metro districts and, and less towards upfront costs. So tell me what each home will be paying towards assessment.
So I'll touch a little bit on the way that we look at the capacity. So we generally issue a special, a special assessment that is kind of a three-to-one value of what the finished lots will be worth, but really the benefit here is that the interest rate is significantly lower. So the developer has to pay these costs regardless, and their cost of financing is significantly higher, and so allowing for the special improvement district gives them a lower cost of capital, which would ultimately be passed on to the homeowner. I'll let, uh, Matt speak from Dreamfinders.
Hey, guys. Matt Childers, Dreamfinders Homes, 2000 Clay Street, Denver, Colorado. Thank you for, uh, for making time to us today, mayor, council members. Just to echo what Shelby said, I mean, yes, there is a cost to the interest rate, but it's in lieu of another interest cost, which she explained in the presentation, would be a higher borrowing rate. Um, so more or less, it's an arrow in our quiver to allow us to, uh, finance this project as competitively as we possibly can. If, if there's any net impact to a homeowner, it's going to be a reduced cost to us, which allows us to offer a home to a homeowner for less. Obviously, no formal commitments on that at this point in time, but that, that's our hope, and that's our expectation.
Thank you, sir. That's what I want on the record. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yeah, that was going to be part of my question, so it's kind of baked into the front end of the cost, so there's going to be no surprise to a homeowner with a special assessment after the fact, after the closing. It's, it's all upfront.
Correct. So part of the service plan amendment does stipulate that it is paid prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued, so it can't be passed on to the third-party homeowner.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No question.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
Yeah, so, um, the 20-year bonds are paid by the assessments that are paid before a certificate of occupancy is there. So can you explain to me why a 20-year bond, if the bond is being paid by the assessments that are paid before closing?
I'll let Shelby speak more to the legalities of it, but 20 years is the expiration of the bond. It's, it's more or less the earlier of that 20-year date, or much more likely, a CO. Um, we, we may even actually pay off some of these at the time that we pull a building permit, uh, just because we're a large publicly traded home builder and, and we, we have our own credit facilities for actually building homes. So, so likely, on a lot-by-lot basis, we'll pay off this, uh, this tax lien, if you will, um, with each respective lot as we pull a permit. Anything else you want to add to that?
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Uh, what is your legal or contractual provision that the legal, that the lien is paid off prior to move-in? Where is that located and what document?
I'll let Tom George speak, the district council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tom George. I'm an attorney of Spencer Fain. We're general counsel to the districts. Under the Title 31, actually, municipalities can do special assessments the same way. The, the statute, Special District Act borrows statutes directly from what the municipalities can do. Um, so the assessment itself is imposed, uh, the quick process is that the property owner actually petitions the district to form the district. It's not a new district, meaning it's not a new entity. It's just a, it's a geographic area where we draw the district boundaries, impose that assessment. Then there's a, a hearing process and a resolution to actually establish the assessment on the basis of, let's say, square footage. Um, then you have an assessment roll, and then when that's done, that's certified, that's sent to the county assessor's office, the clerk's office. Um, and in that document itself, we'll say when that assessment attaches and when it has to be paid. And that way, it functions like a lien or a tax lien, as Matt said. It's a, it's a lien on title on each lot.
So a homeowner would be able to see that paid off on their lot at the, at the county?
Uh, that's right. Anybody with a simple title search, good.
Thank you.
Sure.
Great. Thank you. Well, we may recall you after a public comment and see if there's any questions to answer. With that, I'm going to open up public comment at 7:43. Anyone wishing to make comment on any of the four resolutions around the Hess Ranch Metropolitan District? Seeing none, we'll close it at 7:43. Counsel, any further questions for the applicant? None? All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:44, remand it back to counsel in the same order. Councilmember Rivera, any final thoughts?
No comments.
Councilmember Barrington?
No comments. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Hendricks?
No comments.
Councilmember Dyak?
Appreciate the report, and thank you, and no comment.
Great. Councilmember Wilks?
No comments. Thank you.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you for the presentation from our town attorney and the applicant.
All right, counsel, with that, I will entertain a motion on resolution number 23-064.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 23-064, please.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Rivera, second by Hendricks. Rivera?
Aight.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Next up, I'll entertain a res- motion on resolution number 23-065.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 23-065, please.
Yes. Second.
Motion is made by Rivera, second by Hendricks. Rivera?
Aight.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. I'll entertain a motion on resolution number 23-066.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve it, resolution number 23-066, please.
I'll second.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. And lastly, Resolution Number 23-067.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 23-067, please.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Rivera, seconded by Hendricks. Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Next up is Resolution Number 23-068, and I'll open up the public hearing on this at 7:45 PM. Resolution Number 23-068, a resolution to approve the service plan for the Chime Ranch Metropolitan District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. I am here tonight to present a resolution approving a new service plan for a project known as Chime Ranch. It is a 43-acre site located north of Main Street between the Parker Vista and Sunset Ridge subdivisions. There's a vicinity map up on the television projecting where that property is located. It's approximately 150 residential units that are anticipated to be completed by the end of 2025. They are proposing in the service plan a debt limit of $15,688,750, with improvement costs estimated at $11,310,000. They anticipate issuing bonds in the amount of $12,220,000. The mill levies to be imposed total 70.813 mills, which takes into account the mill levy adjustment from 2019. This is composed of a maximum debt mill levy of 60.243 mills, 5.285 mills for operations and maintenance, and 5.285 mills for the town capital and maintenance mill levy, which is remitted to the town. The district will not be imposing an infrastructure capital mill levy for regional infrastructure, as there isn't any with this project. The applicants are here with a more detailed presentation, so I will turn it over to them at this time if there's no questions from council.
Great. Thank you, Madam Town Attorney. We will start with questions for you with Councilmember Hefta.
No questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
Questions.
And Councilmember Rivera?
No questions.
All right. Applicant, come on up. If you would mind state your name and address for the record.
Certainly. Good afternoon, I guess evening at this point, Mayor and Council. My name is Elizabeth Cortez. I'm with the law firm of McGee D. Becker. We are here on behalf of the petitioners today. My address is 450 East 17th Avenue in Denver, Colorado.
Great.
Just wanted to do a start out with the developer and consultant team for the proposed Chime Ranch Metropolitan District. The developer is Century Communities. We do have Cindy Myers from Century Communities here today to answer any questions as well. I've already introduced myself, McGee D. Becker, legal counsel for the Metropolitan District. The underwriter is DA Davidson Companies. Lacey Knowles is also here today with any questions. Civil engineers, R.J. Our Engineering, and the planning landscape architecture group was PCS Group. Why are we here? We are asking for approval of a service plan to allow the organization of the Chime Ranch Metropolitan District to assist in the efficient financing of public infrastructure, and as well as to assist the town with the construction and maintenance of infrastructure that the town determines is necessary or desirable in connection with the impacts of the development in the district. A little bit of history of the site. Chime Ranch was owned by the Rowley family in 1886 as a major cattle operation in the area. The original ranch spanned thousands of acres and went from Hilltop Road to Ponderosa Drive, and from downtown Parker to Delbert Road. A Rowley daughter married Harvey Chime in 1916. They had a son named Frank, and he continued the business. Over time, portions of the ranch have been sold to numerous homeowners, home builders. This is a vicinity map, again, generally located north of Main Street and between Longs Peak Lane and Parker Vista Circle. A little bit of information on metropolitan districts and what a metropolitan district is. It's a quasi-municipal corporation and political subdivision of the state of Colorado. They are organized and governed pursuant to Section 32, Title 32 of the Colorado Revise Statutes, governed by a five-member board of directors. Those directors are elected by a majority vote of the registered electors within the district. There are four-year staggered terms of office. If a vacancy exists, individuals can be appointed to serve until the next regular election. A district is necessary for this project because Chime Ranch is necessary to keep development competitive. There is currently no jurisdiction or entity to undertake the financing, construction, and ongoing maintenance of needed public improvements. Metropolitan districts are the most cost-effective way and cost-effective method to finance the public infrastructure. It allows for the generation of independent revenues, meaning growth pays its own way, and we are able to then amortize those costs through the payment of property taxes. There are different sources of revenue for metropolitan districts, including district bonds or loans, district property taxes, here an operations and maintenance mill levy, a debt service mill levy, and the town capital mill levy as well, specific ownership taxes, and then the availability of district fees. There are several statutory protections for residents that live within a metropolitan district. The district must comply with all laws applicable to governments. Those include several laws for transparency and accountability, including open meeting laws, the Opens Record Act, the Election Code. These elections are mail ballot elections, just as town, city council hearings or elections are done. We are subject to the Election Code and Title I, and then there are some additions for Title 32. We are subject to local government audit and budget laws, and also disclosure and notification. Recent changes in statutes require new disclosure, as does the service plan as well. Obviously, we must comply with the service plan, and any major modifications to anything within that service plan does require city approval. The service plan for Chime Ranch was submitted on July 27, 2023, and is in compliance with the town's existing model service plan. The property has been annexed and zoned, and the final site plan is in process. The powers that are afforded to the district under the service plan include the design, acquisition, construction, installation, and financing of sanitation, water, streets, safety protection, park and recreation, transportation, and mosquito control. The initial district boundary, again, is a little over 42 acres and is anticipated to contain 150 single-family homes. There are certain limitations that are placed in the service plan. The inclusion and exclusion limitations are there. The inclusion limitation does not allow for any inclusion of property within this district without the consent of the town council. The exclusion limitation provides that the district cannot exclude any property from the district if that exclusion would result or is reasonably anticipated to result in a detriment to the remaining residents and taxpayers within the district or to the district's bondholders. There is also an initial debt limitation that before there is an approved development plan, the district is not allowed to issue debt, cannot impose the maximum debt mill levy, and cannot impose any mill levies for the payment of debt by direct imposition or transfer of funds, also cannot collect any fees to repay debt. There are obligations in the service plan that contain an annual report that must be filed with the town clerk no later than September 1 of every year, and that's for the preceding year. A requirement for disclosure to purchasers, this is recorded, written and recorded early in the process to make sure that any potential purchasers are aware of the total mill levies. That's all overlapping mill levies, so not just the district mill levy, so they have the entire picture. And the town does have the ability, and we will be providing that draft disclosure for their review prior to it being recorded. In addition, as we've discussed, the town capital and maintenance mill levy will be imposed. This is five mills, subject to the statutory adjustments that that mill levy does go to, to the town. As far as the debt limits and requirements under the service plan, again, the debt issuance limit is $15,668,750. The debt service mill levy is limited to 60.234 mills, subject to statutory adjustment, until the statutory, until the thresholds are met. The debt mill levy imposition term is in place, so that is 40 years after the initial imposition of the debt service mill levy. It states that the town will never be responsible for district debt. All debt must be issued in compliance with Tabor requirements, and if there is to be any privately-placed debt, there is a requirement that an external financial advisor be engaged by the district to provide an opinion on that privately-placed debt. The operations and maintenance limits, the district is permitted to impose five mills, again, subject to statutory adjustment for the costs associated with ongoing administrative accounting and legal services. This service plan for this district, the district is not authorized to operate and maintain any part or all of the public improvements. There will be a separate homeowners association put in place to provide that function, in line with the town's rules on districts owning property. These items are to show the different improvements that will be constructed by the district. All of the streets are there in yellow. Storm sewer is also indicated on this exhibit. Water, the extensive water improvements are there. Sanitary sewer, and landscaping. There are several statutory criteria that must be satisfied in order for an approval of the service plan. I will not read all of these to you, but we do submit to the town that all of the criteria have been met. Thank you very much for your time. And as I said, we do have several members of the team here to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you for that presentation. We will start off questioning of the applicant with Councilmember Hefta.
No questions. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Wilks?
Just for people who might not understand, can you go into a little bit of detail of what the privately-placed debt is?
Sure. So there privately-placed debt would be debt that is placed to a non-marketed debt. So typically, or oftentimes, bonds are issued in the market. Privately-placed debt is not placed in the market. So developer-held debt, those types of items.
Randy, anything else?
Oh, yeah, I'm good. Sorry. Thank you.
And Councilmember Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
Are the cows in the barn?
Not anymore.
No questions.
They're doing the painted cows? No, because I'm getting a yes back there.
Yeah, they're in the barn.
Oh, the painted cows. Yes, the painted cows are there. Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
No questions. I will stay. Thank you for the presentation. If you answered anything I wanted to get out, you answered it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We may call you up after a public comment if there's anything to address there. With that, I'll open up public comment at 7:58. Anyone from the public wishing to address Resolution Number 23-068? Close public comment at that same 58, and bring it back to the council. Counsel, any other questions for the applicant? Did you get out? Nope. All right. Then we'll close the public hearing at 7:58 as well, and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Hefta, final thoughts?
Yes. Just an overall big-picture thought on this. Quite often, folks in our community will sometimes get upset with us and say, "Why are you building so many homes? Why is Parker getting so crowded? I can't believe we have another 1,000 homes going into this subdivision." Well, and I think in the first page of the presentation, as you will, if we go back to that, the Chime family sold their ranch and their land to developers. So I think we need to remember this important point. Throughout the United States, there is a private landholder that chooses to break up their ranch or their property and sell it to a subdivision, and sell it to developers. And that's a very important point. The town council does not approve of this or disapprove of this. We have no ability to interfere with private landholders and what they do. But they do come before us, such as tonight, to talk about the requirements with regards to the property that the developer will now have and develop. So again, this is a private landowner that sold his property to several home builders. And we had a great explanation on metro districts from the applicant. So I want to thank you very much for your presentation.
Councilmember Wilks?
No comments. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Dyak?
No comments.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No comments.
Councilmember Barrington?
No comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you. As I said, I truly appreciated the presentation, very in-depth. I think metro districts is something, unfortunately, a lot of first-time owners or homeowners are shocked by, because they don't quite understand how they work. And I thought your presentation went above and beyond. Talked about the inclusion, talked about town council's power in the inclusion, talked about the limitations, talked about the obligations. Just a well-thought-out presentation. I thank you for that. For that reason, I find the service plan for the Chime Ranch Metropolitan District substantially complies to our model service plan. Well done.
With that, I will entertain a motion on Resolution Number 23-068.
I move to approve Resolution Number 23-068.
Second.
Motion is made by Hendricks, seconded by Wilks. Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Next up, and I'll open the public hearing at 8:01 PM, ordinance number 13.111 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to organize the downtown Parker Business Improvement District to provide for an appointed board of directors of the district and appoint the initial directors thereto, and approve the 2023-2024 operating plan and budget for the district. This ordinance describes certain real property that will be included in the district and subject to taxation. Three council members previously disclosed in written disclosure statements filed with the Colorado Secretary of State and the town clerk that they operate businesses that are located within the proposed district boundaries. Specifically, Ann Barrington previously disclosed she maintains a business address at 19402 East Main Street. Joshua Rivera previously disclosed that he maintains a business address at 19559 East Main Street, and Brandy Wilks previously disclosed that she maintains a business address at 19590 East Main Street. Under Section 3.4 of the Home Rule Charter of the Town of Parker, no member of council shall vote on any question in which he has a substantial personal or financial interest. Additionally, Section 7.2 of the Home Rule Charter of the Town of Parker provides that every ordinance shall require the affirmative vote of the entire council in order to be adopted. In other words, at a minimum, four council members must vote in the affirmative to pass an ordinance. If these three council members are disqualified from voting because they have a personal or financial interest in the subject matter of this ordinance, then the town council will not be able to act on the ordinance. Under CRS, Section 314404, Subsection 3, a town council member may vote, notwithstanding a personal or private interest in the matter proposed or pending, before the town council. If the council member's participation is necessary to obtain a quorum or otherwise enable the body to act, provided the council member complies with the voluntary disclosure requirements under state law. Here, council members Barrington, Rivera, and Wilks have complied with the voluntary disclosure requirements. As a result, they are authorized to vote on the ordinance in order to maintain a quorum to conduct business. This is commonly referred to as the rule of necessity. Great. So under the rule of necessity, we'll continue. And Madam Town Attorney, with your presentation.
Thank you. So tonight, we're here to consider an ordinance to create the downtown Parker Business Improvement District. A petition was filed with the town on July 12, 2023, requesting the same. Under this, under state statute, a hearing is to be held on the petition within 20 to 40 days of filing the petition. The town clerk has published and mailed notice to property owners concerning this hearing this evening. The petition must be signed by persons who own real or personal property in the service area, having a valuation of not less than 50% of the valuation of all real and personal property, and who own at least 50% of the acreage in the proposed district. The town clerk has determined that this petition was signed by persons who own real property in the service area, having 61.7% of the valuation per assessment in the proposed service area, and 71.3% of the acreage in the proposed district. The BID has determined not to include personal property within the district. It is only real property. This ordinance tonight, before each night, forms the downtown Parker Business Improvement District, which will be a separate political subdivision, and appoints the five initial members of the board, which are Tony Mango, Tony DeSimone, Brian Zender, Omar Castillo, and Denise Hock. It also approves the operating plan and budget for the district for 2023, 2024. The operating plan and budget are filed each year with the town no later than September 30. Town council then must approve within 30 days or not later than December 5. The operating plan that's been submitted with the petition includes the services that the Business Improvement District will provide. These include special events, physical improvements, including decorative lighting, banners, public art, and landscaping, street furniture, lighting, and pedestrian amenities, maintenance activities such as snow removal, marketing and promotion services, and economic development services. It does provide that they may contract with the DBA to implement this work plan. They anticipate seeking a mill levy of up to eight mills, and the budget for 2024 shows revenue and expenses of $150,000, with a revenue of $114,000 coming from that proposed mill levy, and $36,000 coming from other sources. They anticipate having an initial 10-year term through 2033, at which time, if it is determined to be extended, they will come back to request a resolution from council, asking to extend the term of the Business Improvement District. If not extended, it will be dissolved.
Great. Thank you, Madam Town Attorney. We'll go to questions for staff. Councilmember Dyak, would you like to call off on any questions?
Nope, not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Wilks?
None. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
None. Thanks.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions. Thanks.
Councilmember Rivera?
No questions.
All right. Do we have an applicant present? I kid, you've been standing up there the whole time. Welcome, Mr. Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. I've got Tony Mango coming up here with me, but Omar Castillo, 12509 Prince Creek Drive. And you'll see a presentation up there that Tony and I will be taking turns today. So we'll go ahead and get started. If we could go to the next slide, please. So kind of just want to go over real quick where we've been, where we're going, where we've headed to, and what we've been up to, and how we got here. So what we did back kind of in that couple, two, three years ago, Chris, who's our past chair, who he is in here, is here as well. He started this process back then, starting to kind of see what does this look like, putting together a business improvement district. Where we've been is we've kind of started with that. We also worked with a company called DCI Downtown Colorado, Inc., where we had them come in and do some seminars with us, do some workshops with us, with our DBA members, and spent some time with them. You know, what is it that our downtown businesses need and want? So what that created is then that workshop, which a lot of people attended, a lot of things that they came out, which we'll cover throughout the slide presentation. But one of the things that we did when we did that workshop is we were able to come up that where we were as a group, we were far years, light years ahead of where a lot of these downtown business improvement districts try to start. We were just really ahead of the curve, really ahead of the ball. So what DCI recommended us was to put together a business improvement district. So what we started doing in January through May of this year is did a bid feasibility and draft plan. So we did an orientation, a database, an outreach through focus groups, individual meetings, and then we did workshops. And then that's when we decided to move with the additional steps. In that timeframe, we also started working with Puma, who they are here as well. And we started working with them and how to put this together, and what does it look like, and how does it work, how does it operate. What happened in step two is takes us to June and July of this year, where we were literally out there pounding the streets, talking to everybody, where we had anticipated where we wanted this business improvement district to go. What we ended up finding out is just, you know, being out and about, talking to people, is a lot of people just didn't, you know, understand the features and benefits of it outside of our normal downtown Parker corridor. So then, after many, many times of starting with different maps all over the place, is a lot of people just didn't, you know, understand the features and benefits of it outside of our normal downtown Parker corridor. So then after many, many times of starting with different maps all over the place of what the bid could look like, we finally settled up on what we could traditionally think of downtown Parker. So from Parker Road clear down to almost to the library, which the library is not included. But what we came up with is that's what we thought would be what the business improvement district is, which a lot of people consider downtown. We did visit with a lot of folks who would love to be a part of it, but they just figured, you know what, it really fits for downtown Parker up and down Main Street. So we did that. We did do the property owner petition drive to where it was stated we hit 71% of support. We have a lot of DBA members here tonight that support it. We've been, we've had Puma come by, talk to our meetings as well, and give the features and benefits of it. And now we're, now here we are where we are today, August 2023, trying to look for your guys' approval. And then the next step, should we get that tonight, would be the Tabor election, which will really start getting going on this particular project in September and October, with an election day of November 7. And it's for the businesses within the Business Improvement District boundaries. Next slide, please. So the process, as I stated, several years in the making, aligning the downtown planning efforts, we contracted with Puma, we had interviews and surveys with a lot of our business and property owners, engaged with the DBA members heavily. We seem like we, every other month, we're doing some sort of presentation on the Business Improvement District to our members, as well as just going out there and talking to individual businesses. We've had, as I stated before, we have had multiple iterations of the map and operating plan, and then finally finalized June 2023 for the petition drive. Next slide, please. So a recap, the recap of the Business Improvement District is self-imposed, self-government mill levies up to eight mills, commercial property within the district boundary. Service priorities to include marketing, fiscal maintenance. We do have an operating plan that's been developed based on stakeholder input and local best services. And then what we did up here is we put down three bids that are in within Colorado right now. A lot of you probably have visited them, a lot of you probably have been in them and didn't even realize that there is a bid. But if you look at downtown Arvada, which is a very, very popular downtown, that's 15 blocks. Their budget is 135. You can see what their top services are. If you look at the Old Gaylord District, which is one block, that has a budget of 70,000. They do beautification, landscaping, snow removal. And then if you think about the Havana District, that one is 30-plus blocks, and that has a budget of 580, marketing and branding, events, and advocacy. Next slide, please. Tony?
How's everyone doing? Tony Mango, 8632 Thunderbird Road, Parker, Colorado. So as far as the structure of the group, five-member board, consisting of three property owners, one DBA member, and then one non-DBA member, tenant-at-large from downtown. Again, probably initially $150,000 budget. As downtown develops, that budget could probably grow significantly. One discussion we've had that actually that budget could grow while the mill levy decreases as some of these large properties come online. So grow taxes and cut taxes, it's kind of a beautiful combination. Again, the DBA is the main driver, they're the doers, they're the people that do everything. I think the bid would be more of a funding mechanism, you know, for downtown, so. Next slide.
Yeah, go ahead.
The boundaries, we kind of talked about it. The map kind of looks weird, but a lot of conversations. One thing to note, residential is not involved, it's only commercial properties. So some of these, if some of these mixed-use properties come online, it would only be the commercial portion of the properties, not the residential. You can see there's a lot of town-owned and county-owned properties in there that aren't in the map, that aren't part of the district. So it's really just funded by those property owners. Next slide. So on the petition drives, you know, again, a lot of conversations that just started with really talking to tenants, talking to property owners, trying to find property owners, that's probably one of the biggest challenges. Out-of-state property owners, out-of-country property owners. But really just kind of starting those conversations to kind of see where this boundary would go. Again, I think you heard, based on assessed value and acreage value, that doesn't mean that 40 or 30% were opposed, that just means that's who we could find that would want to participate. Next slide. So again, the timeline, really the next thing, if you approve it tonight, would be a November election, which would be all property owners and business owners, LLC owners, that would be in November, and would require a majority of vote. And then if approved, it would start January of '24. Next slide.
Yep, no, I think that's it.
Great.
Yeah, I think that's it, that's it.
All right. We'll go back to council for questions, the applicant in this case, Councilmember Dyak.
Yeah, Omar, could you just sort of, at a very high level, articulate, people talk about, he talks about a Tabor election. There might be some people who didn't catch your, your comment, but who, in fact, votes in this and who, and from which revenue stream does it, does it occur?
Yeah, I'll probably have to have Brad or the attorneys come up and help out, but it's going to be the people that vote on it are going to be the people within the district, so within the little orange weird pie chart, whatever you want to call it. It'll be the folks within the district that'll vote towards that. So yeah, you can see it up there now. So it's the folks within the orange boundary lines that'll be doing the voting. As Tony stated, it'll be just the commercial building owners as well as the tenants, no residential, but those would be the folks that are voting. Tom?
Right.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
Yeah, can you go back to the slide where it says what the board will be consistent of? Okay. So the three property owners, one DBA member, and one business tenant, non-DBA. The five that you listed, can you break down where they fit into that?
Yeah, so the property owners, Tony Mango, Brian, who owns Parker Station, Tony De Simone from Confluence, the one business tenant, non-DBA, that would be me, and then the one DBA member would be Denise Hack, who's a tenant of Tony's.
Okay, so question on the business tenant, does it need to be a business tenant within the district?
On this one, Tony is able to appoint someone to, because he does have multiple properties within the district.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
So I think you had stated that there was no county or local town properties in this bid, just for the record.
Correct.
Okay. So if somebody wants to come into the bid later on, that is not part of a bid when it's formed, can you just explain that process?
Yeah, I'll do my best. Might need Tony, Brad, come up here and help me out as well. But my understanding is, is that once it's passed and once it's formed, if somebody wants to be a part of it, we can annex them in into the bid by them simply requesting to be part of it. Tom?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Tom George, I'm attorney of Spencer Fain, advising on this bid formation. Once the bid is formed by ordinance, anyone can, any property owner can petition to join the bid or include his or her property into the bid. Petition city, town council comes before you, town council would adopt an ordinance including that property into the bid. So created by ordinance, expanded by ordinance.
And just a follow-on question. So if they didn't want to be part of the bid after the bid was formed, and then they brought their business here, they wouldn't have to be?
There's exactly the opposite process in statute. Someone could petition to be excluded from the boundaries of the bid. They could come to town, petition town council, you could adopt an ordinance after finding of whether or not it's in the best interest of the bid to exclude it, and then you could adopt an ordinance excluding property.
So there's a process for either, either new business coming to want to be included or excluded?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes, so assuming this passes, you'll, you projected 150,000 for the budget for 2024. At a high level, can you go how about you might be using that for what purposes?
Yeah, we did have a slide, I wish we would have that slide, but man, I, so some of it would be used to hire a person to help us manage the bid. So there is people that specifically manage bids. We've had the opportunity to meet a couple of them, that they manage one, two, or three of these bids, because this is not a full-time job. So money would go towards that. It would help to go out to do some, professionalize some of our services. You know, a good example is the Christmas parade, right? We put that on, right? It'd be nice to be able to go hire someone to strictly do it for us, so that we can go back to being regular citizens and being a board and worrying about our jobs that we do 40 hours a week and not put many hours a week into a parade. But it would be to go towards that. Some other ideas that we do have is if you see sometimes around Christmas time, you guys will see commercials on TV, come, come visit Cherry Creek, come stay at Cherry Creek, you know, stay the weekend in Cherry Creek, that's put on by a bid. Those commercials are put on by a bid. We envision doing something like that as well for downtown Parker. We'd like to continue to beautify and improve self-watering planters. There's other ideas of bringing back some pretty cool things to O'Brien Park that we would like to do. We've talked about also, one of the things that I personally envision that I'd like to see is, you know, after, after a weekend of downtown Parker, you know, you have farmers' markets, you have, you have, you know, the farmers' markets, concerts, or whatever goes on all the weekend. What I would like to see is every Monday morning, street sweepers, pressure washing sidewalks, getting done by that. So you could see something like that as well, Todd, is what we envision and anticipate.
Cool, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Brad?
Hi, everyone. My name is Brad Siegel, we're consultants to the proponent group. I reside in Denver and 1201 East Colfax. Within your packet tonight, there's an operating plan, and the draft operating plan contains a proposed budget for the first year. The board of the bid will have the ability to amend this budget, but to illustrate and to answer the question more directly, the budget proposes 25,000 allocated to physical improvements and beautification, up to 50,000 on events and promotion, 25,000 economic development, business support. And then what Omar was just talking about on administration, either part-time or full-time district management, and other 50,000. So there is a proposed budget within the operating plan.
Thanks, Brad, for that. Councilmember Barrington?
So just a clarifying question. There, this is by the businesses, for the businesses, and there's, there's no cost to residents, only benefit?
Correct, Dan. Yep, absolutely.
Councilmember Rivera?
And the property owners.
It's true, yes. That's a given.
Are, when the votes are, when the ballots go out, is the vote of the property owner and the vote of the tenants equal? So you only have a small number of property owners and you have a large number of tenants?
Again, good question, not to get too esoteric on election law, but bids are a bit unique because your, by statute, you have a defined elector as a term, and there's, there's three ways you could be an elector. You can be a resident of the bid, but bids only include commercial property, so it's very rare to have a resident. But every once in a while, somebody resides in a commercial property. So if they reside there and register to vote, they could vote. Then you have a property owner, so if an individual owns the property, that person can vote as an individual. Or if an individual leases property in his or her own name, can be an elector. Then you also have a classification of people or of entities, right, legal entities. If a legal entity owns or leases, that entity can designate a person to vote on its behalf. But we do have one person, one vote, is a constitutional principle across the country. So every property owner, whether he or she owns one property or 10, can only designate one person to vote one time. Or if that individual owns five properties, votes one time for all five. So occasionally, you have tenants that might lease multiple properties, that entity could only designate one person. You can also, can't all designate the same person. So different businesses have to designate different people. Again, one person, one vote. So it's not necessarily even on square footage, or number of businesses, or number of properties, or number of residents, right? It's one person, one vote, based on those, those qualifications.
Absolutely. Thank you for, don't go anywhere, Mr. Double Duty. Talk to me about inclusion. Let's say somebody wants to include and they're not, they don't touch the boundaries. Can we, can we reach out and grab somebody that, that isn't congruent, or how does that work?
Yes, properties can be non-contiguous by statute, so anybody within the boundaries of the Town of Parker technically could join the BID if it's a commercial property. So non-residential, non-agricultural property could join the bid, they could petition town council to be included.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen, but stand by in case we have public comment on this, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment at 8:24 on this topic. Anyone wishing to make public comment on ordinance number 13.111? Come on down. And if you would, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kathy Zefore. My building is 19755 East Pike's Peak.
Great, go ahead.
My building is not included, but it butts up against what is included. And I deeply appreciate all of the comment by the applicants, all of the applicants, explaining this, this thing to me. Because my property butts up against, I would assume that at some point, I may be annexed, with or without my joyful, you know, desire. And so I'm concerned about what, what this all means, and some of my fears have been allayed, but I continue to have some issues about this and the concept of inclusion and exclusion particularly, that a new business coming in can choose to be excluded, can an existing business that has been annexed into this, this, you know, can that, can they make a decision to be excluded after they are already included? You know, that I would want consideration of that. It concerns me that somehow the town is not capable of taking care of downtown Parker, that this feels to me a little bit like how to raise more money that maybe the town should have been responsible for, to clear streets. I suppose we're talking about clearing sidewalks, that sort of thing that are, you know, our responsibility as, as tenants and owners of the buildings. I'm concerned about what is driving this. When I look at the, the map, I see a lot of confluence there, frankly, and it concerns me. The question that I have kind of behind this is, will, will, will this bid be able to supersede what the town has already put in place, for example, height restrictions on buildings? You know, will we suddenly have the bid coming to us and saying, we have more power to decide what downtown looks like, and thus, we can have, you know, greater height as opposed to what town council determined for the confluence development? I'm concerned about, you know, services, about how we're going to pay for services back and forth. Will there be limitations on those? Will the bid be responsible to pay the town? Will the town be responsible to pay the bid? And that's, that's basically, those are my questions that have not really been addressed here tonight. But thank you all for great presentations.
Great. Next up?
Sorry, made that lower. Christina Gertan, 11975 Blackwell Way in Parker. So I have had the honor of being involved with the Downtown Business Alliance only since 2021. I was introduced to the DBA while working under my previous company. My managing broker was super active in the organization, and I enjoyed hearing about the things they were doing. So I decided to raise my hand and offer to volunteer, and the first committee assignment was diving headfirst into the hometown Christmas parade. And little did I know what I signed up for. It was a massive undertaking, to say the least, and it took months and many, many hours of planning by our incredibly dedicated members, and lots and lots of funds raised. But those smiling faces looking back at us, waving and cheering and enjoying that day while we took our victory lap on the parade route was absolutely indescribable. I cannot speak highly enough about the members who worked tirelessly last year to bring back not just the parade, but also not just the parade, but also trunk or treat to our post-COVID world. It was countless hours of time donated and true collaborative effort because we all believed so much that it was crucial for our residents to have celebratory events to come together as a community. I've been a resident of Parker since 2009, and my children, second-year college student and a sophomore at Legend High School, grew up attending these events. We looked forward to them every year, but as time has passed and my children have grown, it was time to pay it forward. I'm just one of so many working hard to bring those smiles and memories back to the community. Our committee had a saying, that if we lose our traditions, we lose our identity. With the strong growth in our population, we feel like it's more important than ever to ensure our past, present, and future residents are able to look forward to these annual events for years to come. The DBA is determined not only to keep traditions alive, but to also enrich the experience, so our residents are proud to bring their family, friends, and visitors to downtown Parker. This does not happen without a high level of sacrifice and time and constantly pounding the pavement to raise the funds needed to host these events. It's no small feat when the parade alone is in the tens of thousands of dollars to organize. I believe in the DBA so much that when the time came for me to branch out on my own in business in May of this year, I made it a point to seek out a business location that would allow me to continue to be engaged. That's how much I believe in our mission. We're a family, and we tirelessly, tirelessly support each other so we can all have continued success as small business owners. Our members all have the same goal, make downtown Parker an undeniable destination for visitors and residents alike, and keep the heartbeat of our town strong through commitment, collaboration, and a genuine love for our community. A business improvement district and the funds it would infuse into the efforts would greatly increase our ability to continue to bring more events to downtown Parker and also allow opportunities for our small businesses to thrive and grow and keep their doors open for many years to come. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, next up?
Hello, everybody. Chris Schnell, 15654 East Pine Drop Avenue here in Parker, Colorado. So I'm a small business owner. I have a service business in 20 Mile Central, kind of above Fika there. I've also been involved with the Downtown Business Alliance since about 2016, when I first moved to Parker. One of the things I noticed that I first became involved with the marketing committee, we were putting on events in downtown Parker to try to drive traffic, to keep our businesses' doors open. Nothing better than walking down Main Street and seeing a bunch of wealthy business owners. I mean, that's what we want, right? Not only now, but into the future. We were trying to put on First Friday Art Walks, okay? And we did, if you remember those. They were a great time, and I just remember this, something really so conceptually simple actually took a lot of manpower, people power, right? It took a lot of coordination, took a lot of volunteers, and with any organization, you got the 80/20 rule, 20% of the people are doing 80% of the work. Our organization's no different, right? And so we have these volunteers that are, one, business owners, two, members of a family, oftentimes with kids, right? And three, volunteers on their own time to try to help downtown. And we're putting on First Friday Art Walks, we're working our butt off to do a chili cook-off, which if we're lucky, make like four grand out of the deal, okay? When we did it, we did it twice. So with that in mind, the first thing I noticed is, this is unsustainable, okay? We cannot have a vibrant downtown driven by volunteers alone on a shoestring budget. Folks, we have competition, we're not in a vacuum. Castle Rock's over there. Guess what's going down? Ridge Gate, beautiful new downtown lone tree. Do those people want to come to our little businesses here in Parker? Well, we gotta lace up our skates and skate to where the puck's gonna be, right? We gotta make sure we're competitive for the future. So that is, to answer your question, the driving force behind the BID. So when I was the chairperson for the Downtown Business Alliance of Parker, the first thing I did is I went and met with the DDA director, Kevin Tilson, of Castle Rock, because Castle Rock's doing great, right? What are you doing? How do you do it? And that started this endeavor. I met with DDA leaders from Fort Collins, BID leaders from Arveda, Arvada? DDA members from, our owners of Longmont and Loveland, right? And we just got all this knowledge and realized, this is what we need. We need this type of professionalized organization so we can continue to put on things like the Hometown Christmas Parade. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
How y'all doing? I'm Brian Zender, and my wife and I, and actually, my wife's college roommate, bought Parker Station about four years ago, okay? We really hadn't been very much involved in Parker, so my perspective is kind of from the outside coming in, all right? For the last three or four months, I've participated a lot more in your community events, and I've watched the DBA, I've not been a part of any other DBAs or anything along this line. All my previous investments have all just been kind of single what I do. I was really amazed at how much effort all these people put in, how much effort they put in, volunteer their time, how much they try to pull the community together. For Parker Station, we help with, you know, like, we put on trunk or treat, or we, it's, we don't put it on, and I take that back. We allow to use our parking lot to do that, and with some of the Christmas stuff, we've allowed that. And mine was basically from the outside, my retired teacher. But coming down here, again, I say, it's just amazing to me how they do this. I think a community is extremely important. With COVID, we've had a really change in the business paradigm, in that a lot of our offices are a lot smaller now, and so a lot of them really have an individual feel to them. And I think we want to make those people that work in our buildings really feel part of the community, and I think this bid can do part of that. I think this is a really good way to get business owners working together with people that run the businesses, with property owners, okay? With individuals like you, with the accounting officials or city officials. And I think it's, you know, after Omar and Tony came and talked with me this, earlier this summer or whatever, I thought, I think this is the way to go. I just had dinner with Tony, and he said, well, you know, sometimes you gotta get worried about these conservative guys that really don't want to raise any taxes on anything. And I said, Tony, I'm one of those guys. So, you know, when you're talking about that, I think this bid is worthwhile, and I'm willing to use, you know, the money that, because obviously Parker Station, we'd be part of the taxing ourselves, I'm willing to kick that in and say, I think this is a good thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on ordinance number 13 dot 111?
Good evening. Susan Bertaki, 11614 Tyrolite Trail in Parker. Good evening, mayor, council, administration. Our family owns Kilwin's Chocolates and Ice Cream just off Main Street by O'Brien Park, and I am also a board member of the Downtown Business Alliance and serve as their secretary. Most importantly, our family has lived in Parker for 16 years, and we are in love with this town. I'd like to extend my gratitude for the O'Brien Park playground improvements. We struggled during construction, but this summer has certainly made up for it. Sales are way up, and Kilwin's currently employs 18 staff members. The O'Brien pool upgrades haven't hurt business either, so thank you. The reason I bring this up is because I know that, I know for a fact that improvements to downtown Parker do attract and excite members of our community. We see new and different faces every day at Kilwin's. This and Parker traditions, as mentioned, the Christmas parade, Fall Festival, bands rocking it out at tailgate, trunk or treat, farmer's market, other events, they keep visitors coming in and keep our business strong. As the secretary of the DBA, I attend monthly meetings. These meetings are where us, volunteers, focus and brainstorm ideas to make downtown Parker a more vibrant, attractive, and fun place to be. At the end of the meeting, board members are tasked with a long-to-do list, permitting, seeking vendors, raising, begging for money for a $50,000 parade, pricing and purchasing swag, networking, keeping up with our books, collaborative marketing, selling tickets, increasing membership, and picking up trash around town. Omar, our chairman, announced his retirement effective January 2024, a huge loss to the DBA. Shelley Mango is also departing as a board member. She has graciously put in her time. Some good ones have moved on to bigger and better positions with the town, and others are becoming burnt out. I'm afraid within a couple of years, we will be in a dire position in a place where we don't have volunteers to support our growing downtown. This would put our traditions at risk of not happening, and as a Parker resident, I do not want to see that. We need help. As a business owner, I have weighed the costs and risks versus the benefits. I understand we are essentially taxing ourselves as business owners. Mr. Mango is my landlord, and he has crunched the numbers. He assures me that our contribution at Kilwin's to the assessments will be about $35 per month, based upon our square footage. $35 in exchange for a BID board, which will be responsible for some or all of what the DBA currently does, and the high likelihood that the building owners will hire a paid administrator. Our business, Kilwin's, can afford $35 a month, and I foresee with the upcoming expansion, downtown businesses will be able to successfully financially support the bid moving forward. I'm excited, and based upon extensive research, in addition to visiting other towns where a BID exists, this is exactly what we need, and your investment in the BID thus far is very appreciated. I ask that you vote to approve us moving forward. Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Good evening, board. Candace Coleridge, 15015 Munich Avenue. I am going to be reading a letter on part of Tony DeSimone from Confluence, because he couldn't be here this evening, and then also as a longstanding resident of Parker, I'd like to speak. I have been a resident of Parker since 1989. My parents moved into a little community called Clark Farms when it was just a little community, and I have grown up in this town, and I am now raising my daughter, who's in eighth grade, in this town, and this town is built on tradition. The power of the bid is to support that tradition and not take away from it. We need the beautification, we need assistance, there are not enough doers, and people are tired, and parades and events take a lot of money and a lot of time, and the bid is just here to help promote that. On behalf of Tony, dear Parkertown Council, as a downtown property owner, I'm writing in support of the Downtown Parker Business Improvement District. Working in many different municipalities across Colorado has given us an appreciation of the positive effects a bid can have in a downtown environment. There are many benefits to collecting a small amount of money from each property owner for the benefit of a more cohesive downtown effort. The downtown Parker bid will be able to better coordinate and manage events, have the ability to conduct more events and make downtown improvements to help draw more residents and visitors to downtown. Having more visitors and an active downtown will only add to all of the great things already happening in Parker. And then if you have any questions, he gave us information, which I won't put out publicly, but thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Good evening, Perry Becky. I'm from, my address is 7844 South Magnolia Way in Centennial. I'm one of the members of Bonbeck Parker LLC who owns Parker Center, where McDonald's and Goodwill used to be, and Dollar Tree and all the shops there. You can see, we have the biggest, one of the biggest, I think we are the biggest fish in this pond, and, and I'm on this lady in the green side, in that we feel like we'd been annexed already. We didn't have any say in this. We have one small storefront on Main Street, that's Baskin Robbins, it's 900 square feet. Our, all of our addresses are South Parker Road. We never signed this petition, for good reason. I can see why y'all want to annex us, but you've got, you've got a number of tenants on Main Street which can benefit from this, and that's fine, but we're going to be footing a big part of the bill, and not, you're not going to be snowplowing my nine acres, that's for sure. Anyway, we're opposed to it. We're okay with the district, but we're opposed to the boundaries, and we're asking to be withdrawn from the boundaries within this district. And from what I understand, it's a lot from what I'm getting from listening to the attorneys and some of the proponents of this, is that it's easy to be added to the boundaries, but it's harder to get out, and that's what we want to do. We don't want to be a part of it. We're, we're happy to give and to volunteer money and help projects, but we don't want to be controlled by a bunch of other voters that will outvote us, will have no say in the property. We believe that petition does not contain sufficient allegations to establish that the purposes of the statute will be served by creating the district, and we believe by excluding our two parcels, we'll be in the best interest of the district. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
My name's Ken Chanos. My wife and I own, my wife and I live at 6085 El Duato Court in Parker, and my wife and I own a property on Main Street, 19402s Main Street, which is between Baskin and Robbins and the Garage Restaurant. We moved here in 1978, bought the building in 1991, so we've watched Parker grow. I got this petition, I did not sign it because I thought it was nothing more than a money and power grab. Most of the features that they said they would offer, already offered by the town of Parker, so we didn't think that would be necessary. I think we pay enormous property taxes, and I have not raised the rents on any of our tenants in the last 10 years, and I'm kind of struggling. I, I noticed there was an eight mil increase, which would be about $1,600 a year additional. So as a result, I'm not really in favor of this bid proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Okay, CNN, I'm going to close public comment on this on 8:46. So for the applicant, can we ask some questions of council that came up during the comments? Council, council, if you want to come up? So I heard, I think I heard three or four questions on this, and one was regarding involuntary annexation into the bid district. One is, can a business be excluded after they've been included into the bid? And then, is the Business Improvement District able to change town zoning for height restrictions, et cetera? And then what if an individual is opposed to the, being annexed into the current bid?
Sure. Help me with those while we go through these, in case I miss one, all right?
I got them written down, so.
Great. I'll help you. Let me start with the easiest one first, and that's land use. The bid has no land use authority whatsoever. So when it comes to building heights, zoning, land use, generally speaking, that's still your prerogative as town council. The bid doesn't get to do anything with that. I guess perhaps that bid board can make recommendations when it comes to things that might affect businesses, but it wouldn't have any authority as a bid itself on that. The use of the term annex isn't really the right way to think about it. I think that's a whole loaded term that you understand better than I do, probably. I would say there's, there's two points in time. So there's tonight, the ordinance creates the BID boundaries and establishes them. So once it's created, those boundaries exist. Then we would have inclusions or exclusions, okay? So after tonight, you form the bid, whatever the boundaries are. In the future, and we gotta be careful to use the word business owner, too, because it's really property owner. So a business owner can't petition to include or exclude unless that business owner owns the property, so it's really property ownership. So the woman that spoke, she's adjacent to the boundaries. If in the future she wanted to include into the boundaries, she as the property owner, and only the property owner, could petition to town council to include. So no one else could petition on behalf of a property owner. It's that property owner only. Same to exclude. So it's not business owners necessarily to exclude, it's property owners. So no one else could start that petition, it would be on behalf of that property owner only petition, come have a hearing in front of town council, you'd adopt an ordinance, excluding or not adopt ordinance. So that's how that works after the fact. Tonight is a little different in that you're establishing the boundaries for the first time. So the boundaries, if the ordinance is adopted tonight, will be the way that you adopt them tonight. In that, petition is the list of parcels to be included. Part of your determination tonight is whether those properties should be included in the bid boundaries as you establish them or not.
Okay.
Is that all of the questions?
Yep, I think you, yep, I think you got, and the, the last question is, though, is if you're included in the boundaries tonight and you're opposed to that, that that's something you need to take in the future, once the bid is established?
That's right. You could, yeah, you could certainly petition at any point in time, this year, next year, whenever. And also, keep in mind, too, the, what's unique about the bid compared to something like a metropolitan district that you heard tonight, is you didn't form that metro district. a metropolitan district that you heard tonight, is you didn't form that metro district. You approved the service plan. They have to have an election to form that metro district. This ordinance will establish the BID as an existing political subdivision and as bid boundaries. It'll have no taxation authority, no revenue or spending authority, until we go to that taper election in November, and only if the voters vote in favor of allowing the district to impose a property tax, collect the revenues, and spend them. So if voters don't vote in favor, the bid won't have basically any financial authority whatsoever.
Madam Town Attorney?
Yes. Tom, can you address this, so I can have Kim Crawford come up and address this, but the council could also exclude property this evening. They just don't include it in the initial boundaries of the district.
That's right. Yeah, the terminology is a bit challenging, right? It's not excluding, because there's no bid yet, but you could remove them from the list of properties that you're drawing in the bid boundaries, if that makes sense.
All right. With that, we will go, council, you want to go one more round for the applicant? Whoa, whoa, whoa. Come on back up. And Omar, not getting off that. All right, I'm going to start in the same order. Councilmember Dyak, questions?
Yeah, I mean, to me, I think, I don't know if it's a question for council or not, but to me, I heard a lot of comments about events and hiring people. There are also some other benefits. I think it might be more of a budgetary thing to kind of bring up, maybe a higher level of service that the Main Street or the bid property owners would like. Maybe there's some synergistic abilities, as they come together, to get some services that aren't town-provided. I'm just looking for a little bit more, other than events and hiring somebody, what else could be done, or within the budget, what else is projected to be done?
Thank you for the question. Again, Brad Siegel, consultant of the bid. And we've worked, as you know, we have worked on bids throughout Colorado, throughout the country, for 30 years, and I used to work with the bid in downtown Denver. Business Improvement District allows the property owners and businesses a lot of flexibility as it relates to improving downtown. I also want to make something clear, that the state statute is very clear that, we're talking about enhanced services tonight. So the Business Improvement District is designed to provide services and improvements that are over and above what the town does. So the town, its basic services, just like anywhere in the town, continue to be provided in the downtown area. To your question, what the enhanced services can be, certainly the festivals and events are something that, as you heard in testimony tonight, that many businesses and residents of Parker value. We're also talking about ways to support small businesses. This could be through marketing. It could be through promotions, buy local, connecting local residents to local purchasing opportunities. Downtown Parker, one of the most, I would say, valuable components of it is the dominance of local independent businesses down there. These are local retailers. These are your neighbors, our neighbors. These are people we know. The Business Improvement District is uniquely set up to support local independent businesses in terms of how they promote. In talking about the Business Improvement District over the last eight months with property and business owners, we've also heard about some creative ways, that they could come together and use the association of the Improvement District and these funds in new ways. So for example, the idea of shoveling snow from sidewalks. That's the responsibility of the private owner. Currently, every private owner has the responsibility to do that. Some are more diligent than others. So if a Business Improvement District, there could be a couple benefits. One, it would be consistency, so consistency of the experience. And secondly, it could be less expensive than contracting. If you're contracting as a large community, you could actually save money. In some other districts, these funds are used to enhance safety within a downtown area. So whether that is with having private safety patrols or security cameras, I don't think necessarily that's needed in Parker, but that's a common use of these districts in other places. Parking, parking is going to be a stronger commodity over time, or a more limited commodity. These districts can work with the town, work with the private property owners, to solve and manage parking in a better way. And the last thing I'll say about this is, I think that's the whole spirit of the enterprise here. It's really a way for the town and the business community, the property owners and the businesses, to partner in a variety of ways to improve the experience downtown for everybody who comes downtown. And again, there are examples of these up and down the Front Range, and more than 1,000 of them across the country.
Did that answer the question?
Yeah, no, I just, I wanted to kind of expand and provide some context. I mean, I think a lot of the, or not a lot, but a few of the comments were really focused on, you know, the parade and other things. I wanted to, you know, provide a more in-depth bouquet, if you will, of just what, in addition to that, could the bid provide? Thank you.
Sure. Councilor Wilks?
So I have two questions. The first one is, if we're looking, sorry, if we're looking at it, we're looking at about $150,000 a year, and we know that the parade is about $50,000 a year, and I know firsthand what the other events cost, and we're looking at all of the improvements that we're doing, and hiring a staff member to take some of that pressure off of our volunteers. Well, break down for me, because when you take out what I know the events cost, and then what I know the improvements are going to cost, it seems like whatever that person gets paid, which I know is a full-time position, isn't going to be enough for what a person is going to need to do to pay them. It seems like the salary would be very small, and that's my first question.
Sure, I'll take a shot at that one. So a couple comments on this. One is, first of all, the Business Improvement District, the assessments are the core of the funding. They're the foundation of the funding for the downtown. So many of the existing funding that is secured, sponsorships for events, for example, are not going to go away. Those will remain. So we anticipate that the $115,000 roughly that the bid would initially raise would be leveraged, and that's why we have the budget at 150. To your point, we did budget roughly $50,000 on the staff side. That may or may not be a full-time staff person, but we do think it'll be adequate staff support, certainly to carry the festivals and events that you currently have. I do think, and one of the speakers earlier mentioned this, thinking ahead, there's going to be a lot of change in downtown Parker here over the next five-plus years. And we're in an interesting position, that as downtown investment continues, the budget will increase over time. And in fact, Tony alluded to this, I think we'll have the opportunity, over time, as more value, as more development happens, to actually do both, raise our budget and decrease our mil levy over time. We've seen that in a number of districts throughout the state, throughout the country. So I understand the concern with the budget. $115,000 is $115,000 more than they have today. It's a significant foundational element, and we would expect, one, they'll leverage it, and, two, it'll grow fairly significantly within the next several years.
Thank you. And then feeding off of that into my second question, we do have property owners here tonight that have expressed that they do not want to be a part of this. They want excluded. So if we exclude them from the boundaries, what does that do to the $115,000 or $150,000 that is projected right now? What does that change the numbers to?
Good question. From the testimony, I was listening very intently, my understanding, we had three, one of which who's not in the district, so that would not necessitate a change. Mr. Becky is partially correct. He's a significant property owner. It's a gateway property into the entry of downtown, and along with the park, we wanted to make sure the gateway was included, not the largest property owner by assessment. So the largest owner by assessment, Parker Station, testified in favor of this. However, he is within the top five. So to answer your question directly, I think his property and the other gentleman together are roughly, I think about $12,000 roughly, is what would be negated from the budget. I will say this, though, we went through a lot of iterations on these boundaries, and we do think gateways are important for a downtown district. So certainly, the gateway at Parker Road is the primary entrance in and out of downtown.
So annex, poll, sir, sir, we've already heard the public testimony. Councilmember Hefta, questions?
Yeah, I'm going to break this down a little bit by analogy, and I'm going to hope that Omar can maybe answer this question. Come on back up. So just let me tell you a story. I'm a mom of two boys, and every day, I work hard for my boys. I take them to places in the town. I take them to the pool. I take them to Skyzone. I take them to the movies. I do so much for them. And sometimes I think, wow, do all moms do that? Do all moms provide for their sons that way? And I'm going to analogize here and say that the Downtown Business Association is kind of like a mom to downtown Parker. I'm going to make this point and ask the question, because I think there's some misunderstanding of exactly what the Downtown Business Association has provided the business owners in downtown Parker. The town provides some events. The chamber puts on some events. But I'm going to go out and say that the Downtown Business Association is the mom to Parker, Colorado. And mom gets taken for granted sometime, and we don't really know what mom does all the time. It just gets done. And so we heard Omar say, I might be going away, and some of my volunteers might be going away. So explain to me what it would look like if we didn't have a bid, and the Downtown Business Association sort of devolved from all this incredible volunteerism that they now provide? What would that look like?
Well, it's a good question. Number one, you must know my wife, because my wife gets treated the same way. So she does everything for our two kids. But, I mean, I guess I've never thought of it like that, Laura, but I mean, I think that's very nice of you to say. You know, that's something that makes me feel pretty happy and proud. The DBA works hard, and I think that's the thing. I think we work really hard to bring great events for the community, for the business owners, and for the vibrancy of downtown Parker. And it is a lot of work, but this also does, with the Business Improvement District, it does provide everything that Brad was talking about, that Tony was talking about, that everybody was talking about. And, you know, I guess I don't think we get taken for granted, but I think there's an opportunity to make things easier and improve, beautify, make things better than they already are, kick it up another notch. I think everybody stands to benefit, whether you agree that you're being annexed, or you think you're being annexed, you know, or you're a property of butts to it or something like that. Everybody stands to benefit from this, and whether people see it immediately or not, everybody stands to benefit from this, because when we put an event downtown, I'm sure they visit all the businesses in the community. I'm sure they, I'll say, I'll just say it, I'm sure they probably stop in at Baskin Robbins. I'm sure they stop in at McDonald's. I'm sure they stop in at Portofino's. I'm sure they stop in at all these other businesses in this community when we're doing these events. So it's not Main Street's getting all the love. I think it's the whole downtown district community that gets it. People go all the way down Spike's Peak and check out other businesses that are in the area that we honestly spoke to, that they see no features of benefit of this. That's why they're not being included. However, they still benefit from it, when we bring down 10,000 people for a parade. They still benefit when we bring 3,000 people in for a trunk-or-treat event. They still benefit from all the events that we're doing, so sure, I guess we'll say we get taken for granted, but it is what it is. We still get up every single day, and we go out to create these events. We make these events happen. And if it wasn't for the support of the DBA, their members, and the board, for all these things that we do, you're right. I'm simply just kind of getting out of it, because I'm tired. I've been doing this. I've been on the DBA board for five years, and I'm tired. It's time for something different to come in and take over and help us out, and then kick this up another notch, and get it to the next level, that the bid does do for downtown Parker, and that is take it to the next level. Everybody said it before, we've got Lone Tree coming in with their thing. Castle Rock is vibrant. I personally have visited eight communities that have bids in them, and it's amazing what those bids have done to those downtowns and to those communities. It literally, as I just said, kicks it up a notch, kicks it, you know, gives it another level, gives it a boost. So hopefully, that answered that, and next time you feel you're taking it for granted, you can call my wife.
Thank you. I don't, I love being a mom.
Absolutely.
But I think the point was being is that all these business owners are really benefiting from being part of the bid.
Absolutely. Every single one of them.
And they have benefited from the DBA's hard work over the last, how many years?
We've been around for seven years.
Seven years. So they have already benefited a tremendous amount from the Downtown Business Association's hard work with volunteers in putting on events, whether they participated or not.
Correct. 100%.
And so I want to say thank you for what you've done, and your teen Omar for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Laura.
Councilmember Hendricks, any further questions?
Questions, right?
Questions of the applicant?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yeah, if I could bring counsel back up, two-timer. I just, as I did when you were presenting with the previous, I want clarification in layman's terms. Talk to me about inclusion, and talk to me about exclusion. Petition means something to us, but it doesn't mean something to them. So what does that process look like? What do I do if I'm a business and I'm outside and I want to come in? What do I do if I get voted in and I want to get out? In layman's terms.
After tonight. Yeah, absolutely.
After tonight. Yes.
The bid statute doesn't actually prescribe a certain method, so I use the word petition. It's lowercase p, petition. That could be a letter from a property owner. That's what we've seen in the past. It's usually a letter to the municipality and to the bid board to say, I'd like to join the boundaries of the bid. Please consider this. Then the town would take that. You'd probably draft up a draft ordinance to include them, and you would have a, you'd schedule a public hearing. You'd send out a notice to that hearing, just like you do for all your public hearings. And you'd hold a hearing on that ordinance. So petition is really, doesn't have to be anything in particular. And most common, we see a simple letter signed by the property owner.
And exclusion?
Exactly the same. Petition to exclude would be a letter saying, I do not want to be in the boundaries. Please consider me for exclusion from the boundaries.
So exactly the same thing. Property owner doesn't want to be in, he could write a letter, he or she could write a letter to the board. The board would take said letter, bring it to town council. We would say.
Technically, the board is, the bid board doesn't have to be involved at all. It's not a petition to the bid board. It is a petition to town council, because you created it by ordinance, and you control the boundaries of the bid. The bid board, in practice, we've seen the bid boards obviously weigh in on that, because it's, and they, your finding in that inclusion or exclusion would be what's in the best interests of the BID. So of course, the bid would probably come to the hearing, right, and explain what the bid board thought the best interest meant. But it would be your petition letter to you as the town government.
And still on exclusion, if said hearing was to happen, then the tenants that may not agree with the property owner could also come in front of this council.
That's right.
And state their case.
Yep. For or against, including or excluding.
Forward or against, however it goes.
Same process, yep.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do you have one more?
No.
Okay. Close the public hearing on this at 9:07. So council, before we go to final debate, you've heard testimony from two property owners that they want to be excluded. So if that's in your consideration for tonight, to work that into tonight's bid approval, we need to know that, so town attorney can provide you updated motion information. So please consider that as part of your debate. Councilmember Dyak, we'll start with you on final comments.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, to me, when I was running for this position and got elected, there was a previous owner of the Parker Station who, you know, quite honestly, he created some community down there. And I did say that, Mr. Van Landshut, wherever you are. You know, he was very proud of what he did, but he always wanted more. He always told me who he was and where he came from, and, you know, I knew every year I had to go into his office and have that downtown conversation. And it started with him just creating an incredible narrative of what the downtown could be if someone just listened to him and all of his great ideas. And he proceeded to then take me down Main Street, and he would let me know, and he would point where he thought improvements could be. And as I tried to explain to him that, you know, the town provides a level of service, and certain things that he wanted were not quite. and certain things that he wanted were, were not, not quite there. That they were above what we could provide, or if we could consider it, it would be somewhere down, down the road. And that, that kinda frustrated him every single year that I went. And he wanted one person to agree with him. And he wanted something like this so he could, he could create, you know, create action to, to his ideas. You know, obviously, one person can't, can't be the architect of a downtown, but a collective can. And this, this organization, as, as we are, we are looking toward it, you know, has the ability to come together and reconvene on those ideas or create new ones or whatever they wanna do to, to try to improve, enhance, beautify. All of those great buzzwords are downtown. We have a, a number of proud, proud business owners who've, who've set up and there's, there's some who quite honestly just can't be here because they're working. They're working to provide us the services that we want in our downtown. And, you know, to me, I, I thought on, on average, the, the, the business, or I'm sorry, the property owners would, would, would be the challenge. And I've, I've, I've heard from all of them and the concerns, and I hope the, the answers to Ms. Four is, are, are enough to, to provide you some, some comfort that they won't be aggressively trying to include you into the, into the, the district. You know, so to me, and, you know, again, I've heard from, you know, the, the property owner, the gateway, the, what I call the old 1-2-3 parcel, back before it got developed, there was a 1-2-3 fire station on it, which was the old Safeway, which is now the Dollar Tree. So, you know, I think at this time, with, with the process in place and where we're at, I'm comfortable with the, with the, with the boundaries at this point in time, but we can certainly, certainly address the issues here in the future after we, we move forward if, if this is, if this is approved. So again, supportive of the whole process. And again, I think this is a first step to provide some, some abilities for the downtown to really enhance itself. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
Are we at comments or debate?
Comments.
Comments.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Wait. Anything but questions?
Well...
Comments and debate.
Okay, so one of the things you said for us to consider that requires a question to Kristen. So do I wait on that?
Absolutely. If you, if you are debating that, yes.
I can ask that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So with what Josh brought up, which counsel advised, that if a property owner wants to be excluded, the tenants, if they want to be included, then it would essentially come to us to hear both tenants and property owners. Is that, is that correct?
If the, if the property owner wants to exclude after this evening, after they've already been included, then they would, as Tom indicated, they would file a letter with the town requesting exclusion. And we would hold a public hearing, just like we're doing this evening. And at that point, tenants and property owner and anyone else that's interested could come and testify before council.
Okay, so if we exclude certain places tonight, they don't need to inform their tenants and have that come forward? But if we include them tonight and then they want to be excluded, they need to also include their tenants to come forward to us?
They, they don't have to include the tenants to come forward to us, but it would be a notice, public hearing, and the tenants could come and testify. But you're right, tonight, we would not hear from those tenants if they're not here, I mean, we didn't hear from those tenants.
Right, okay. Thank you. So with that being said, if we have property owners who have expressed they didn't sign the petition, they don't wanna be a part of it, but knowing after they see how successful the bid could be, they can petition us to come back in. I mean, I kinda, I, I wanna honor the bid moving forward, but I also wanna honor the property owners that have said, "I don't wanna be a part of this." So I kinda wanna exclude the two property owners that said they don't wanna be a part of it, but then give the DBA the power to move forward with the Tabor election with what's left, is kinda where I'm at.
Okay. I think, hey, let's continue down. And we'll be back to... Councilmember Hefta?
Well, I actually wanna hear what Councilmember Rivera...
Well, we'll get down to him, but if you'd like to make your comments. What about you?
Well, it's, it's a tough one for me, because I hear from the, the property owners tonight. We, we do, I'm kinda sad that maybe this couldn't have been worked out with the bid in the formation of this information with the property owners. And I do wanna give those property owners a little bit more time to understand the bid, because I'm, I'm not really hearing that there's an adequate understanding of what the bid is going to do for the downtown property owners. So this is a tough decision for me, because I do think that there is a process for the two owners to come before council and be excluded. And I think I would be in favor of that right now, because I, I do wanna give the bid a little bit more time, those property owners, to understand what is involved with this bid and really what they're getting with the bid for the amount of money they're paying into the bid. The, the objective of this is to have some uniformity to the downtown business owners and beautification to all of the properties within the bid. So I think there is an adequate process to come before us to make the argument to say, "I now wanna be excluded and here is why." And, and that, we again could do that at a different time. So I guess that's what I would be in favor for right now, is continuing on with the bid. And then if you wanna be excluded, come before us at that time and we'll entertain all that information at that time, because that will get it all on the record and we can make a decision at that time.
Okay. Councilmember Hendricks?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I lived here for almost 20 years and people always bring a community and hometown feel and, you know, a lot of that has to do with the events, but also really it's just the people that live here that put on those events and the people that attend those events and really just comes to downtown in general for a gathering place for dinner or whatnot. So I, I think this is an important piece moving forward. It's a mechanism to frankly, compete with other towns, as one citizen said, as we are. They're moving forward and I believe we need to move forward as well. As far as the, the, the property owners that wanna exclude themselves, I'm also at a, I'm torn. Do we do that tonight? Or let just, let's set the table now and then if they do have a mechanism to exclude themselves afterwards? It sounds like there is. But I'm, I could, I'm 50/50 either way, what we do tonight. I'll hear from others. But as far as the bid itself, I, I'm in support. They will be able to do enhanced services that the town can't do. I mean, I'm, I'm one of the people that voted to kill the parade, which killed me personally, but that we just were not at a place to support it anymore. But I'm, I'm very happy the DBA was able to continue that tradition alive. And I think this bid will create new traditions as well as maintain what we have, and I think that's important. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
I think that these boundaries have been very carefully thought out and that, that piece of property that the property owner says he wants to be excluded, I think it hasn't even given the, the bid a chance. And I can guarantee that I've seen everyone over there roll up their sleeves and get to work on every community event that has been put forth in this town. And I don't know that that's the case with this property owner. But I do know that there has been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears that have gone into these events. And it's not sustainable. I've, I've seen it. The burnout that happens, because it is the same people that are involved and that, that bring this community together. And as a business owner, I know that that's important to my business. It brings more people in, in through my doors. But as a, a council member, I need to look at what is good for, for, for all of us collectively. And I think this will truly enhance our downtown. And if, if we don't move forward with something like this, I, I, I think that our downtown could start dying. And I certainly don't wanna see that happen. So I am, I am for moving forward with, with the bid, with the boundaries as they are in this map.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you very much. 2008, I bought a little business on Main Street. And, you know, it was, it was a small investment, but it was what turned out to be my biggest joy, was working on, on Main Street and getting to know everybody. Two people came to visit me. One of them was the Chamber of Commerce and they asked if I would, would join them. And the other one was Mr. David Van Landshut. And he asked if I would join the DDC. My wife and I talked, we're partners in our business. And then we had to make a choice. What do we do? Do we join the, do we join the DDC, which was the Downtown Development Council, the precursor to what is the DBA today? Or do we join the Chamber of Commerce? The Chamber of Commerce sounds great. But what I saw was the Chamber of Commerce that, that had wonderful events. They, they, they focused on the businesses. They focused on ribbon cuttings. And this is nothing against the current chamber, this is, this is another chamber, but they focused on ribbon cuttings and networking events and trading business cards and, and it didn't, I didn't see investment in downtown. I didn't see what I wanted to see as a business owner in downtown, because what we have in downtown is hodgepodge. What we have in downtown is a bunch of different property owners and business owners that are forced together in a small area. We don't have a strip mall where we can get together, we can go to our landlord and say, "We want trashcans." We don't have a strip mall where we can get together and go to our landlord and say, "I need my sidewalk, you know, I need my street, excuse me, plowed by 6:00 AM because I have an early business." We have individual landlords that have individual pieces of property downtown. So what I saw and the decision that we made was to go with the Downtown Development Council, because the Downtown Development Council, or the, the current DBA, was an organization that focused on the governance of the area, the specific area that I was worried about, what trashcans are going downtown. Because when we opened, it was what we called the Big Dig down on Main Street. Tore up Main Street, put in new steward system. Unfortunately, lost some medians, but gained some parking and some incredible pedestrian amenities as far as sidewalks. But we got to voice our opinion on, on bike locks and, and where do we want those and trashcans? And, and all of that discussion that I had with Town Hall led me to this seat where I'm sitting today. And then the current DBA led some others to seats where they're, they're sitting today. And that, that involvement, that buy-in, what, what we sacrifice to create a downtown, to create business for the communities, for the businesses within our downtown, is blood and sweat and tears, is, is exactly what I heard. When we, when we were the, when we were the DDC, it was myself, it was Mr. Shari Riggs who owned Vines at the time, and it was Brendan Zidanovich who owns Parker Bernash. It was the three of us. That was the 20% that did 80%. It was not 20%, it was 3% that did 80%. And, and we did everything. So I mean, things that you see today, the wine walks, that was started by us. But we got burnt out and the Chamber took it over. You know, we did carriage rides back in the day. We got burnt out. You know, it got taken over by the Chamber or the town or, or whomever. And it just, it, it, you need professionals that are making monies to benefit your community. I do believe that there are some towns, some businesses that benefit from what we, the hard work that we do. And I do believe it's, as it's been stated over and over, it is the utmost importance that we are competitive regionally. Because if we are not competitive regionally, we will die downtown. And we will lose out to Ridge Gate, as was pointed out. We will continue to lose out to, to the new-fangled downtowns that they create in Southlands or what they're redoing beautifully in, in Castle Rock. And we need to ensure that our tax dollars stay in this community. And for a small investment that eventually would be passed on to the end user, which is the, the customer. You know, it's not the services upstairs that see it. The cams get passed downstairs to the retails. The retails pay the cams. The cam costs get passed on to the, to the purchaser. So, you know, eventually it is the citizens that are paying the cost to invest in their downtown to make it marketable. It's not us. It's not the property owners. It's the citizens that ultimately pay an elective tax, the most elective tax there is, because we're voting on it, you guys are voting on whether you wanna be included in, in November. So I mean, you're voting one to be included and then you're, the citizens decide with their, with their wallets whether they want to be included or if they wanna continue to go to Castle Rock or over to Lone Tree when they get built out. What we can do with the hodgepogges that is downtown and with a bid is economies of scale. We can all try to do things as businesses that drive people in. We can paint our windows. We can sweep our porches. We could do wonderful things that are gonna bring people in. But if we can get together and do that, that benefits us all as a whole. And that benefits our community, because this is the postage stamp. This is the picture. This orange triangle is what you see on postcards for Parker. It's what you see on our website for the town government. It's what you see all over this community. It's what you see when Nine News comes to town. That's what we are investing in today. That's what we're choosing to vote on today, is competing with everybody else and ensuring that all the businesses that are within the orange line continue to succeed and continue to do what they can. I am in favor, I have been in favor of this since David Van Landshut told me I should've been in 2008.
Counsel, any further comments or? Councilmember Wilks?
So, so if I'm hearing correctly, because we've got, and that's where my tenant question was coming from, because obviously a lot of the tenants and businesses do benefit and they love all of this, allowing the property owners that are currently saying they wanna be excluded, allowing them the opportunity to see what this is going to bring and what this is going to do. And then if they still choose to opt out afterwards, then they can sign the letter and come to us, sounds like it really would be the best.
I won't speak for counsel, but in my personal opinion, if, if there is a letter that is presented to this council and property owner writes a letter and then that letter is presented to council and the tenants in majority come to this council and say, "We don't wanna be part of it," I mean, that says it for me. You know, that, I mean, that's it. If the tenants come in here, property owner doesn't wanna be part of it, the tenants come in and they wanna be part of it, then we have a hard decision to make, right? But I believe that comes at a later date. I believe today we start the process and we allow the tenants a voice, because those tenants aren't represented today.
Yeah, and I, I think that's fantastic, because, I mean, obviously, I agree with everybody up here on the benefits of the bid and we have all put in our blood, sweat, and tears, for the most part, into the DBA. So that part wasn't the question. I just wanted to make sure we were honoring the business owners that did come and speak to us tonight.
Counsel, Laura?
Yeah, I think that's correct, Brandy. And that's, therein was my struggle, is that business owners, again, should have due process. They should have that opportunity to come before us and say, "I don't wanna be a part of this and here's the reasons why." But I really, I, I really would urge those business owners first to really have a sit-down, more of a sit-down with Omar or any other folks on the Downtown Business Alliance and really find out what the Downtown Business Alliance has provided for the last seven years to the town of Parker, for this downtown Parker. Because I will tell you, you're not gonna go to any other community here in, really, that even in the vicinity of Parker and see what Parker puts on. When you go to the community, and, and I spend a lot of time going to these events and I take my two young boys with me who just love it. I meet people from all over, Arapahoe, Douglas County, as far as way of, as Littleton. They really just love the events we put on. And our downtown is why I moved here. I moved here because I loved FICA coffee, I loved our downtown, I love the park, I love the ice cream. And so I think there's a process and I think the business owners can go through that process and we can honor that process when they come back to us at that point in time.
Councilmember Rivera?
No, I, I appreciate that and I thank you. And it just, it reminded me that, that there are decisions that, that get made. And I, I wasn't, I wasn't, there was a point where I was against some things that, that were for the benefit, because I was a smaller business and I couldn't afford to buy into some things. But we went ahead and made it. And I just, it brought me back to something that, that we heard throughout the campaign trail, but a long, long time ago, Stephen Strain, who used to own the Warhorse, sat down with him and Jim Anis and David Van Landshut. And the whole discussion came down to the fact that the rising tides raise all ships and that's what, that's what Stephen said. And, and so that's what this is about. I think that that's, that's the biggest thing, is this benefits all the businesses. This benefits the business owners. This benefits the citizens that want those businesses. There are definitely some property owners, and I get it, I'm a property owner and, and costs are insane. are insane. Um, I, I, I fully understand what commercial property means. Um, but I also understand that, the big picture, this is beneficial to, to our entire business community, which then, of course, is beneficial to our citizens.
Right. Counsel, with that, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number thirteen dot one-one-one.
I move to, move to approve ordinance number thirteen dot one-one-one.
On second reading.
On second reading.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Wilks, seconded by Barrington. Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Next up on our public hearings, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at nine thirty PM. Ordinance number thirteen dot one-one-two on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to organize the Chambers Commercial Center Business Improvement District to provide for an election of the Board of Directors of the district, and appoint the initial directors thereto, and approve the 2023-2024 operating plan and budget for the district. Madam Town Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, this is your second Business Improvement District, uh, consideration of the evening. This is to, uh, dealing with the Chambers Commercial Center bid. Should I wait?
Nope, you're ahead.
Okay. Uh, which concerns fourteen acres located at the northeast corner of Chambers and Hess. There's a vicinity map up on the, the screen. Uh, the town received a petition that was filed on July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, uh, for formation of the Chambers Commercial Center BID. Uh, the, according to the state statute, a hearing is to be held within twenty to forty days of receiving the petition, which is why we're hearing that, the, um, we're having the public hearing on the petition, uh, this, this evening. The town clerk has published and mailed notice of the hearing to property owners. The petition must be signed by persons who own real or personal property in the service area, having a valuation of not less than fifty percent of the valuation of all real and personal property, and who own at least fifty percent of the acreage in the proposed district. The town clerk has determined that the petition was signed by persons who own real or personal property in the service area of the proposed district, having a valuation of sixty-four point four percent of all real and personal property in the service area, and who own sixty-seven point eight percent of the acreage. The proposed bid does not contain any personal property at the time of receipt of the petition, though it will contain both real and personal property once it's formed. Uh, the ordinance that's before you tonight forms the Chambers Commercial Center Business Improvement District. The petition provides for an elected board with the following to serve as the initial board: Grant Nelson, Andrew Treatley, Joshua Broke, Thomas Clark, and Dalton Haran. It also approves the operating plan and budget for the, for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. As a reminder, the bid must file their operating plan and budget each year by September thirtieth, and it is approved by the town within thirty days or no later than December fifth of each year. They have submitted their twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget and operating plan, uh, in, in addition to the petition. The operating plan provides that the maximum debt authorization shall be two point one million, which must be authorized through an election. It provides for fifteen mils for debt service and ten mils for operation and administrative expenses. The budget provides for revenue in the form of a developer advance and expenses of fifty thousand dollars, uh, bond proceeds of one point six eight one million dollars in the capital projects fund, and capital expenditures of one million fifty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars. Uh, unlike, I want to note for the council that unlike service plans for metro districts, the town staff does not review these improvement costs and debt limits for, for reasonableness. Uh, the district will provide for public improvements and services consistent with the approved development plans for the property within the district. Uh, because of the ongoing maintenance obligation, they anticipate that this bid will have perpetual, perpetual existence. Um, the applicant is here tonight and has a presentation.
Great. We'll start with, uh, questions for staff. Councilmember Hendricks, any questions?
Um, for properties like this, is this normal? The, the district formations?
These two tonight are the first that we've ever seen in the town, so I can't say that it's normal. Um, but it is, it is a, something that can be created by state statute, and they do exist throughout the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendrick, uh, Rivera, sorry?
No questions at this time.
All right. Councilmember Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Great. All right. With that, we'll call up the applicant.
Very patient applicant.
Very patient applicant.
[laughing]
And if you would state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Nicole Pekoff. I'm also with Spencer Fane at seventeen hundred Lincoln Street in Denver. Also with me tonight is Grant Nelson with Republic Investments, and Andy Treatley with Ventana Capital. So if you have questions for them, they're here to answer them as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. We are asking that you approve the formation of the Chambers Commercial Center Business Improvement District, along with the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four operating plan and budget for the district. Our presentation summarizes the key provisions of the operating plan and provides information about the project. This, this district will function similarly to the Parker Downtown bid, but on a smaller scale. Its purpose also includes financing the public improvements that will benefit all of the properties within the, um, bid. Okay, I can just use this clicker? Sorry. Okay. Here is a vicinity map of the district's location. As you can see, it's northeast of the intersection of Hess Road and, um, South Chambers Road. And you, you just saw this map. Um, the district will consist of fourteen acres of commercial property. This is a depiction of the major public improvements that will be needed for the project. You can see, highlighted in green, are the storm drainage improvements. Um, and red is the sanitary sewer, and blue is the water infrastructure. And there's a very light black outline of the internal road that will run through the project. Okay. As I will discuss a little further in a few slides, a bid may only include commercial property. Um, however, a bid does function similarly to a special district or a metro district, and must comply with the same statutory and compliance requirements. This project is being developed solely for commercial purposes, and consists of eleven commercial lots, which are anticipated to total approximately sixty thousand to seventy-five thousand square feet of development. Sanitary sewer, water, storm drainage, street traffic and safety, and landscape improvements are needed for this development, which total approximately two thousand and eighty thousand, two, two million and eighty thousand dollars. The bid will operate and maintain certain public improvements and provide services, including snow removal, landscaping, and other streetscape maintenance for all the properties within the bid on an ongoing basis. We are proposing a maximum debt mill levy of fifteen mils, and a maximum operations and maintenance mill levy of ten mils. That ONM revenue will provide funding for the district to, to provide those ongoing services, such as the snow removal and landscaping. We are requesting a debt authorization of two million one hundred thousand dollars, and we are anticipating a bond issuance next year in twenty twenty-four. There are several benefits to using a bid for a commercial development. A bid is comprised only of commercially assessed property. Residential property is prohibited under the statute. BID electors consist of property owners and lessees within the bid, and bid elections have little to no impact on city general elections. Bid electors and individuals qualified to serve on the bid's Board of Directors must be Colorado-registered voters, which means there is no representation from non-Corrado individuals. The bid is required to file an operating plan and budget with the city on an annual basis. This provides the city with an update and status of the bid's actions from the previous year and for the, um, upcoming year. And it'll allow the city to provide enhanced oversight and an opportunity for city and public review. Bids are created to encourage commercial investment in the city, and they significantly lower the cost of public, of financing public improvements, which allows the project to be competitive in the region. And to approve our requests this evening, the council has to find that the petition was signed, uh, was duly signed and presented in conformity with Part Twelve of the statute, that the allegations of the petition are true, and the types of services and improvements the, the bid will provide are those types of services and improvements that are, that satisfy the purposes set forth in Part Twelve of the statute. Thank you for your time this evening. We greatly appreciate it. We are available for questions.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll go to council questions for the applicant. Councilmember Hendricks?
I guess I'll ask the same question. So this is a little bit different than normal, um, I, I assume. So why go this route versus what's the alternative?
Thank you. Yes. So the alternative would be for the developer to probably get a construction loan for the public infrastructure. The, there are two main purposes for this, for this bid. The first one is to finance the public infrastructure at a reduced cost by taking advantage of the tax-exempt bonds that will be, um, available to the bid. And then the second reason is for the ongoing operations for this district. So the snow removal, landscaping, streetscaping improvements. And the bid will be able to do that through the property revenue, property tax revenue.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
I don't have any questions. Nice presentation. Thanks.
Councilmember Rivera?
Uh, thank you. Is this, um, is this on top of a commercial, commercial metro district? Or is this instead of a commercial metro district?
This would be instead of a commercial metro district.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Dyak?
Yeah. Um, so, Kristen, correct, we don't have any oversight over, over this, this bid in terms of finances and stuff?
You do have oversight in that, that each year they submit their, um, operating plan and budget to you for approval.
Okay. And then, and, uh, ongoing. So, uh, I guess, for example, um, you know, you, you get to a point where you take care of all of the, all of the, the bonds, and you get to more of an operational standpoint. We don't have any oversight over that to kind of make sure that, I mean, they're kind of self-policing, um, uh, from a bid standpoint. And again, um, this is the second one, so we haven't had anything, uh, um, relative to this. But if you get to more of a maintenance type of situation, um, who's the one who sort of, uh, dials in the mils that should be, uh, charged, uh, based on the operational expenses that are ongoing?
Initially, the bid's Board of Directors will determine what the mils should be, once it reaches that status. And the bid will still have to return every year to, and provide the, the proposed budget to the council. And you would be able to approve that or, um, require amendments to it.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
So, just to clarify, there's only one property owner, like only one owner. So when it goes to vote, there's really one person voting on this, correct?
We, for this project, there are, um, five, six, six property owners currently.
Okay. So the six of them is, uh, would comprise essentially of their own board, and they'd be the ones to vote for the bid if we approve it tonight?
Initially, it'll be the five individuals that, um, Town Attorney listed, and then there will be an election, um, come November. And yes, any of those property owners would then be able to run for election.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Great. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna open up for public comment at nine forty-three. Anyone wishing to make public comment on ordinance number thirteen dot one-one-two? Seeing none. We'll close it at nine forty-three. Counsel, any further questions of the applicant?
Done.
All right. Then we're gonna close the public hearing as well at nine forty-three, and bring you back to the council in the same order for any final comments or debate. Councilmember Hendricks?
I don't see any red flags on this. Just something, do business a different way, I guess. But I'm in support.
Okay. Councilmember Barrington?
Yeah. I don't, I don't see any issues in thorough presentation. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Rivera?
Uh, DIDs, SIDs, BIDs. It's a, it's a brave new world, I think. So, um, no, I, I, I believe that this is, is, is electoral taxation. I mean, you're, you're, you're voting to tax yourselves. I can't see any issues. Um, you know, I, as a business owner, if I wanted to go there, and I felt the bills were too high, I could go somewhere else. So, I mean, I, I believe that that's, that's capitalism, and, and that's the choice that, that they are, are, that's the, the burden, if you will, that they are choosing to put on their property. And, and if they see that is beneficial to their property to do it, then I, I believe that we, it's our role to empower them to do so.
Councilmember Dyak?
Supportive.
Councilmember Wilks?
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Well, I think they satisfied the, the three requirements, and our legal counsel has reviewed this as well to ensure that they've satisfied their requirements. So I have no issue with this.
With that, I'll entertain a motion on thirteen dot one-one-two on second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number thirteen dot one-one-two on second reading.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Rivera, seconded by Hendricks. Rivera?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Does anyone need a break?
Yeah, real quick.
Okay. Let me take two minutes.
Yes.
Being at nine fifty, Mr. Ekstrom, thanks for your patience while we took care of business. We have a couple of ordinances tonight. Ordinance number one dot five nine O on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the agreement for purchase and sale of land with the CDBG LLC concerning lot twenty-six A, block one, Twenty Mile Village, filing number two, Fourth Amendment. It's all yours, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting two ordinances, the final ordinances for the acquisitions for the Dransfield Road widening project between Pony Express at the post office there and Main Street. So these ordinances are related to that project. Quick little vicinity map. The first ordinance here is related to the property at the northwest corner of Dransfield and Main Street, better known as August Moon Asian Grill. So a little background, in November twenty twenty-two, Town Council approved ordinance one point five seven zero, authorizing staff to proceed with good faith negotiations for needed right of way and temporary construction easements necessary to construct the Dransfield Road widening project. Right of way and easements are needed from four property owners along the project. And this ordinance addresses the acquisitions needed from CBDG LLC for a portion of lot twenty-six A, block one, Twenty Mile Village filing number two, Fourth Amendment. Approximately three hundred and sixty-one square feet of right of way is needed to relocate traffic facilities and accommodate new sidewalks and curb ramps. Approximately two thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight square feet of temporary construction easement is needed to facilitate construction and for the restoration of private landscaping and irrigation. The total cost for this acquisition is twenty-six thousand five hundred and thirty dollars excluding closing costs, and funding has been appropriated in the twenty twenty-three Urban Renewal Projects Fund. An ordinance is required to approve this right of way purchase and sale agreement, and the project cannot proceed without its approval. Here's just a quick illustration of the right of way and easement geometry. The right of way is the blue hatched area on the corner there. And the temporary construction easement is the brown hatched area that borders the project. So staff recommends Town Council approve ordinance one point five nine zero on second reading. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Great. Council questions. We'll start with Councilmember Rivero on questions.
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Diak?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions. Thank you.
And Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Great. With that, we'll open it up for public comment at nine fifty-three. Anyone from the public on ordinance number one dot five nine O? Come on down, sir.
Christopher Adams, one two five eight one Prince Creek Drive. Just for clarity, the total cost of everything is twenty-six thousand five hundred and thirty. What of that is for the actual three hundred and sixty square foot right of way versus what's to fix everything after the rest of the temporary easement that we're asking? Just for clarity purposes, based on the toll, we have a grand toll, but what's for the actual right of way versus what's for restoring what we've taken over during the construction project? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at nine fifty-four. Mr. Ekstrom, do you have a breakdown of the costs between the easement and the temporary easement?
I'm going to check my notes here. I'm not sure that I do.
Maybe just an average customer?
Yeah.
It doesn't appear that I have that breakout.
We can email that information to Mr. Adams.
Great. Thank you. Counsel, any other further questions for staff?
None.
None? All right. Then I will ask for any final comments from your debate. Councilmember Rivero?
None.
Councilmember Barrington?
Nope.
Councilmember Hendricks? Diak? Wilks?
No.
Hefta?
No.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number one dot five nine O.
I move to approve ordinance number one dot five nine O on second reading.
Second.
Motion is made by Hendricks, seconded by Hefta. Rivero?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Diak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Next up is ordinance number one dot five nine one on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the agreement for purchase and sale of land with CDBG LLC concerning lot twenty-three A, block one, Twenty Mile Village, filing number two, Fourth Amendment. Mr. Ekstrom?
Okay, I'm going to sound like a little kind of a broken record here. But this is the property that is just north of the August Moon Asian Grill. The building looks like it's one unit, but it's actually two separate buildings and two separate legal lots. It's a multi-tenant facility. Various businesses in there currently. So this is what this ordinance is dealing with. Same property owner. So same background, in twenty twenty-two, Town Council approved ordinance one point five seven zero, authorizing staff to proceed with good faith negotiations for needed right of way and temp construction easements necessary to construct Dransfield Road widening project. Right of way and easements are needed from four property owners along the project. This ordinance addresses the acquisitions needed from CBDG LLC for a portion of lot twenty-three A, block one, Twenty Mile Village filing number two, Fourth Amendment. Approximately two hundred and forty-one square feet of right of way is needed to relocate traffic facilities and accommodate new sidewalks and curb ramps. Approximately three thousand sixty square feet of temporary construction easement is needed to facilitate construction and for the restoration of private landscaping and irrigation. The total cost for this acquisition is twenty-six thousand one hundred and twenty dollars excluding closing costs, and funding has been appropriated in the twenty twenty-three Urban Renewal Projects Fund. An ordinance is required to approve this right of way purchase and sale agreement, and the project cannot proceed without its approval. So here's just a quick picture of this one. Triangle piece on the corner there is the right of way, represented in blue shaded area. And the brown shaded area is the temporary construction easement. So staff recommends Town Council approve ordinance one point five nine one on second reading. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Great. We'll start in the same order. Councilmember Rivero?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Diak?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
None.
All right. We'll open it up for public comment at nine fifty-eight. Anyone from the public wishing to make comment on one dot five nine one? Mr. Adams, if you want the figures on that, we can include that in the same email. Okay. All right. But you can still come down and have your three minutes. But all right.
Fine.
Perfect. All right. We'll close public comment at nine fifty-nine, bring it back to council for any final comments or questions. Councilman Rivero?
No, I just the name, I just can't get the Ramones out of my head.
Well, it's a federal program.
It's a federal program.
Community building block grant.
You're right. It would be CB CB C CDBG. Yes, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm tired.
All right. Councilmember Barrington?
No comments. Thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Hendricks?
No comments.
Councilmember Diak?
I'm good.
Councilmember Wilks?
No, thank you.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you for your presentation on both of these.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion on one dot five nine one.
I move to approve ordinance one dot five nine one on second reading, please.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Rivero, seconded by Hendricks. Rivero?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Diak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Next of our five resolutions regarding the ballot. Kristin, do you want to take these individually?
I actually have a resolution on the model service plan that comes before the resolutions on the ballot questions. So.
I'm back thinking about the Ramones and what was CDBG and the songs. I thought it was DDT, wasn't it?
CBGB.
CBGB.
CBGB. All right. I'm not that cool. First up, resolution number twenty-three dash zero six three, a resolution to approve the model single district and multiple district service plans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This resolution approves a new model service plan for single districts and a new model service plan for multiple districts. The model service plans were last adopted in two thousand nineteen. You did adopt a resolution in two thousand twenty-two, which did incorporate some changes into the model service plan that are reflected in the red lines that are attached. Basically, the changes to the model service plan are to provide with the written consent of the town, districts are authorized to create special improvement districts, to impose special assessments against the property within the district, to finance costs of public improvements. This is similar to the First Amendment you approved this evening for the Hess Ranch Metropolitan Districts that will incorporate that authorization into the model service plan going forward. Any lien on property from those special assessments must be satisfied prior to certificate of occupancy and prior to transfer to an end user, just as was was with the First Amendment you approved this evening for Hess Ranch. Special assessments are pledged to repayment of bonds but are not considered debt or development fees under the service plan. The second change that you'll note in the red line is that it revises the definition of a mill levy adjustment to allow for statutorily mandated tax credits, cuts, and abatements, as well as any constitutional or legislative changes in actual value against which the assessment rate is applied. And that was approved earlier in two thousand twenty-two as part of Resolution twenty-two sixty-five. And that summarizes the changes to those model service plans.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. We'll start with questions with Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Diak?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Rivero?
No questions.
All right. So we're going to open up for public comment at ten oh two. Anyone wishing to make public comment on Resolution number twenty-three dash zero six three? Mr. Adams is coming down.
Christopher Adams, one two five eight one Prince Creek Drive. I had a question. I'm confused on whether this is concurrent or after or before the Hess Ranch one. So does this apply to Hess Ranch? Are we doing it together at the same time? Or has Hess Ranch passed and now moving forward, we follow this plan? Counsel was a little confusing on specifying that. Otherwise, I'm fine and agree with this policy altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment on twenty-three dash zero six three? Okay. Seeing none. We'll close that out at ten oh three. Madam Town Attorney, any thoughts?
I can address that question. The Hess Ranch Metropolitan Districts numbers five through eight, First Amendment was approved this evening. It authorized the formation of special improvement districts. This is incorporating that change into model service plan so that futures future metro districts that come before you will have that authorization in the model service plan, and they won't need to come to you for an amendment as Hess Ranch needed to this evening.
Great. Thank you. Final comments, debate? Councilmember Hefta?
None.
Councilmember Wilks?
No.
Councilmember Diak?
No comment.
Councilmember Hendricks?
None.
Councilmember Barrington?
No comment.
Councilmember Rivero?
No comment.
All right. With that, I'm going to entertain a motion on Resolution twenty-three dash zero six three.
I move to approve Resolution number twenty-three dash zero six three.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Rivero, seconded by Barrington. Rivero?
Aye.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Diak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Now we're on to the resolutions regarding the ballot. Madam Town Attorney, I can read all these in, but do you want to handle this one presentation or separate?
They're listed on the agenda separately, so I think we need to handle them separately.
We'll take care of that. Resolution number twenty-three dash zero seven two, a resolution of the Town Council supporting the passage of ballot question two A concerning the fines and maximum imprisonment for violations of the Parker Municipal Code.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I know, I snuck in.
In.
I am. I'm pretty quiet. It's it's usually passed by bedtime, so I'm just extra extra quiet tonight. So I have four resolutions to present to you tonight. They're all pretty similar. Some background, on the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three Town Council meeting, you approve four separate ballot questions to be put on this November's ballot. Under the Fair Campaning Practices Act, you are allowed to provide a resolution in support of these ballot questions. And so what we're doing here tonight is presenting these these resolutions that give the why and the context behind why these these questions are on the ballot. So that's kind of what we're doing here. I'll start with the first one, which would have meant section three point one of the charter. So currently, under section three point one, Town Council has the ability to set fines in terms of imprisonment for violation of town ordinances and regulations. The town may only sentence offenders to pay fines up to a thousand dollars or be imprisoned for a year or both, where state law has allowed a little bit more wiggle room. It allows fines for up to two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars adjusted for inflation and imprisonment up to sixty three hundred and sixty-four days. The purpose of this resolution is to give the context of what's going on in the background. So what I've just explained to you now, and why it would be better for the town to have that flexibility to be able to establish fines and penalties in accordance with state law.
Great. We'll start with questions. Councilmember Diak?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
So by adopting this resolution, we would be able to change that to the twenty-six fifty and up to three sixty-four? Is that correct?
If the charter question is approved by the voters, then you will have that ability. This is really just a resolution saying, we support this pass the passage of this ballot question, and here's why.
Okay. So the voters are going to have the chance to look at that specific language on the ballot. If we passed it tonight, that would say twenty-six fifty and up to three sixty-four.
Yes, it would say this is the ballot language that we are supporting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Rivero?
Just for clarity, so the questions that the public will vote on was passed on, you said, June twenty-second?
June twentieth, yes.
June twentieth. Okay. This is the best, I think, analogy probably would be the Colorado Blue Book, where there's there's comments in what is it exactly I'm voting on?
Essentially, yes, the Blue Book.
Pros and cons in it.
Has the yeah, there has the pro and con statement. This is because it's your ballot question, it is a matter of general concern, you are allowed to to have a statement in support.
Okay. And within that statement in support, we can give testimony, if you will, to the citizens, saying this is why we are thinking this is the best change for the charter.
Correct. That's how all of these resolutions are drafted. So in all the whereas clauses, it sort of lays out, here's where we are now, here's what we'd like to go to, and these are the reasons why. And that will be posted up on the website if you adopt these resolutions tonight.
And that would be for all four resolutions we're going to hear from you about.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think we spent through everyone here. So we'll open it up for public comment at ten oh eight. Anyone wishing to make comment on Resolution number twenty-three dash zero seven two?
Christopher Adams, one two five eight one Prince Creek Drive. So for clarification, all resolutions are posted on the town website. Is this sent out to voters, or is it just on the town website? I understand the whereas clauses dictate everything that's going on, but section for all the resolutions, the section one is the town council and the town parker hereby supports the passage. That's what we're actually passing the resolution for tonight, saying that and that's the language we agree the council agrees on. Is that the correct understanding? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. Any further public comment on twenty-three zero seven two? Okay, seeing none. We'll close out at ten oh nine. Kelsey, thoughts on?
Sure. I'll start with the dissemination piece. The town has an elections webpage where we have every year we post different
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment on 23-072? Seeing none, we'll close out at 10:09. Kelsey, thoughts on?
Sure, I'll start with the dissemination piece. The town has an elections webpage where we have, every year we post different information about the election, so this year we have the text of the ballot questions, we have information about the bid election that you just discussed tonight, and if approved, these resolutions would be on that webpage as well. I don't know if we do mailers or not, that's not exactly my department. Kristin, do you know?
Yes, so the Fair Campaign Practices Act allows us to disseminate the passage of this resolution through customary means. We do not customarily mail out our resolutions, so that would not be something that we would do.
And then as to the second question on that section one, it's, in my opinion, a little bit repetitive because you've already voted to place these questions on the ballot. This is saying, we support their passage. We urge our voters to vote yes.
Great, thanks for the clarification. Council, any further comments, debate question, Councilmember Dyak?
No questions, no comments, sorry.
Councilmember Wilks?
No.
Councilmember Hefta?
State law permits the fines up to 2,650 and imprisonment up to 364 days. That's adjusted for inflation from what it was before at $1,000. So therefore, I am in favor of this resolution.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No comments.
Councilmember Barrington?
No comment.
Councilmember Rivera?
Would it be regular, since we've taken resolutions and written letters as far as positions on state actions, could we post it on Facebook and our social media pages?
I will need to talk with Andy Anderson to see what our customary means are for, but as long as it is a customary means of disseminating that information, we are allowed to under the Fair Campaign Practices Act.
Thank you.
I'm echoing.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion on Resolution number 23-072.
I move to approve Resolution number 23 hyphen 072.
Second. Motion is made by Hefta, second by Hendricks. Rivera?
Aight.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Next up is Resolution number 23-073, a resolution of the Town Council supporting the passage of ballot question 2B concerning the management of town employees.
All right, so second verse same as the first, this is a similar resolution. This charter question, if approved, would, it's kind of a cleanup amendment, so in 2019, the voters approved a different charter amendment that was consistent with our manager, council form of government, so it allows our town manager to write the personnel manual. Section 4.6 says that council has the ability to, what is the word here? It's like supervise, control, and discipline their employees, but that's not really consistent with what the voters approved in 2019 with allowing the town manager to write the personnel manual, which governs all of those things. So that's what we're here for.
All right, let's start with Councilmember Hendricks on questions for staff?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Rivera?
No question.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No comment.
All right, with that, we'll open it up for public comment at 10:12 PM. Anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll close it out at 10:12. He's fast, he gets up fast, so. We'll bring him back for any final comments or debate. Councilmember Hendricks?
No comments.
Councilmember Barrington?
None, thanks.
Councilmember Rivera?
No questions.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
All right, with that, we'll open it up for public comment at 10:14. Seeing none, we'll close it at 10:14 and bring it back in the same order. Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
No comments.
None.
Councilmember Barrington?
None.
Hendricks?
Councilmember Dyak?
No.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
None.
We'll open it up for public comment at 10:17. Seeing none, we'll close it at 10:17 and bring it back in the same order. Councilman Rivera?
No question, or no comments.
None.
Councilmember Barrington?
None.
Hendricks?
Councilmember Dyak?
No.
Councilmember Wilks?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
None.
All right, that'll entertain a motion on Resolution number 23-075.
I move to approve Resolution 23-075, please, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Rivera, second by Barrington. Rivera?
Aight.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Next up is Resolution number 23-073, a resolution of the Town Council supporting the passage of ballot question 2B concerning the management of town employees.
All right, so second verse same as the first, this is a similar resolution. This charter question, if approved, would, it's kind of a cleanup amendment, so in 2019, the voters approved a different charter amendment that was consistent with our manager, council form of government, so it allows our town manager to write the personnel manual. Section 4.6 says that council has the ability to, what is the word here? It's like supervise, control, and discipline their employees, but that's not really consistent with what the voters approved in 2019 with allowing the town manager to write the personnel manual, which governs all of those things. So that's what we're here for.
All right, let's start with Councilmember Hendricks on questions for staff?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Rivera?
No question.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
All right, with that, we'll open it up for public comment at 10:12 PM. Anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll close it out at 10:12. He's fast, he gets up fast, so. We'll bring him back for any final comments or debate. Councilmember Hendricks?
No comments.
Councilmember Barrington?
None, thanks.
Councilmember Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Dyak?
No.
Councilmember Wilks?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No.
We'll open it up for public comment at 10:17. Seeing none, we'll close it at 10:17 and bring it back in the same order. Councilman Rivera?
No question, or no comments.
None.
Councilmember Barrington?
None.
Hendricks?
Councilmember Dyak?
No.
Councilmember Wilks?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
None.
All right, that'll entertain a motion on Resolution number 23-075.